I don't think Ingrid is joining us. From what I heard, and then I also understand Amber is out as well, right?
Correct, she had something that she needed at a family emergency.
And Dean wouldn't couldn't make it either, or? Just curious.
Sorry, you said Dean? Uh, no, yeah, no, I thought we had a more of an attendance. So, but we've got, we have a quorum for all of the items.
Yeah, there's six of us, it looks. I think that's it, right?
Yes. Catherine, of course, recues herself on Oasis and will have five, the remaining two new items.
Right.
Yeah, so we're good.
Right. Okay. All right, Catherine is now coming back for the B1. Okay. That's fine. Um, well, should we get going? Okay, cool. Time being 6:01, I call to order the City of Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. This is our regular meeting for the month of September, it is September 22nd, 2020. And we are on Zoom tonight, like we have been for the past few months. Our webinar ID is 853-9243-6516. And if you wanna call in and listen and give us your public comment, a good phone number is 1669-900-6833, or 1253-215-8782. And with that, we're gonna go into a roll call, please.
Commissioner Dem.
Here.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yeah, here.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Here.
Commissioner Gross Cup.
Here.
Commissioner Schacter.
Here.
Commissioner Wissing. Commissioner Wasso. Commissioner West.
Here.
And Commissioner Kinkle.
Excellent, thank you, and with that, I entertain a motion to seat our alternate commissioner, West.
So moved.
Second.
Second, thank you, and I think we gotta do this by official vote. Otherwise, it's just one big yelling of yea or nay, so Jen, please, call for the question.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner Gross Cup.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you very much. Item number three on the agenda tonight is receipts of the minutes from the August 25th, 2020 meeting. Entertaining a motion to receive those minutes. Or at least.
So well.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion about the minutes? No, we'll see none, we'll call for the question.
Commissioner Gross Cup.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Dem.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
silent, yes.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jen. And item number four, as always, is comments from citizens that are appearing in front of us for items that are not on the agenda. And if you are here for something completely different and are in the attendees group, please raise your hand. And I'll see, I see none, so thank you very much. And we're moving on to our first continued item, which is planning item file 4320, consideration of variances from the required siding rear yard setbacks. And lot coverage for detached garage and some storage. Now, I understand Commissioner Schacter, you have a short statement?
I'll attest that I listened and viewed to the entire P&amp;Z meeting of August 25th. So I am prepared to proceed with this item.
Excellent, thank you, Sumner. And who is this? This is Emery. Please fill us in.
Okay, Marco and Planet Commission, so again, this is a continued item for item 4320, consideration of variances from required siding, rear yard setbacks, and required rear yard coverage. And so I have a short presentation just to go over the proposal and some of the design changes, just a second. Here. So item 4320. So just a short background, the application was reviewed by Planning and Zoning Commission at August 25th meeting. The decision was made to continue the application to tonight's meeting. And following discussion, the applicant agreed to revise aspects of the design. And so the staff report and following presentation is going to focus on the revised application. So just keep that in mind. So project summary, it's a single family home on a 5,000 square foot lot. The zoning is RM2. And the setback requirements in question, we have the front setback of 20 feet, a side setback of five feet, and a rear setback of 10 feet. The project description is for a 321 square foot detached single car garage with 168 square foot storage space. And they will remove a 123 square foot shed. The background information, initial structure is built 1898, applicant current owner bought it in 1999. There was the variance for the guest house in the southeast corner of the property in 2002. And then there was also a variance for, in addition, on the south side of the structure in 2006. And so again, that brings us to the action items. First action item one is the variance request for the setback backs. So you can see the three-foot rear yard setback and the two-foot side yard setback. So that's one item. And then the second action item is the variance request for to exceed the 40% coverage of the required rear yard. So if you can see, the blue is the area which is the required rear yard, which for this property is 500 square feet. And the area in green are the areas of the proposed and existing structures that are in and covering that required rear yard above that 40%. So that's the second, so there's two variance requests with this planning item. And just to explain a little bit more on the recruit required rear yard coverage, so it's based on the lot width times the required setback for that zoning district. So here we have a lot width of 50 feet. The required rear setback is 10 feet, which results in required rear yard of 500 square feet. And code sets the threshold coverage to be 40%. So with this proposal, and you'll see in the gray box down here, this proposal has a total coverage of 292.93 square feet. So that includes the area of the existing guest house in that area, as well as the proposed garage and storage space in that area. And so that is the applicants requesting for 59% coverage, which is above the 40. So again, that's the other item. So here's the project design. So based on comments received from Planning and Zoning Commission and staff, the applicant re-revised the design. So shown here, you can see the full alley width, lot line to the face of the adjacent building in the rear alley. It also includes the overhead electric line as well as the turning radius into the garage. And then there are also some photos along the bottom, which you can see, which are taken in the alley. This was also included in the staff report. So the main changes, the applicant changed the setbacks to a three-foot rear setback and a two-foot side yard setback, which then reduced the rear yard coverage as well because of that sliding it back from the rear lot. And so just a couple items, the accessory structure limit, the proposed garage and storage room with including the guest house is within the limit of the accessory structure limit, and also total lot coverage, it also meets those limits. So those items are meeting code. Just a quick summary, the reviewing agency comments, engineering department, just grading permit issues and geotechnical report. Waste, water and waste of water, just indicated, again, similar with the one-foot setback, the three-foot setback, there also were concerns for any possible sewer main repairs in the alley. And then Public Works also had some concerns over, in the initial application and meeting, there were some concerns over use of peer supports for the foundation for the garage, and then complications from, again, excavating any kind of sewer repair in the alley. They also did say if planning and zoning were to per the variances, Public Works would like to see an agreement similar to one created for the guest house in 2002. And so this is also in your staff report. This just shows various aspects of the application. And items that were changed are in bold and gray, a dark gray. And then items that remain the same are italicized and in light gray. So you can see where the applicant has made changes to different total size of the garage. They reduce the size of the garage, reduce the depth of the garage, reduce the storage size space setbacks. So you can kind of compare between the two, to see where those revisions are made. And as far as the variance criteria, these are the seven criteria. And a variance application must meet all seven. And so for the variance criteria, I've included both action items on each one. So for criteria one, the subject property having an exceptional shape to people that configuration or other exception. The subject property does not have an exceptional shape similar to most in the district other than the primary structure set slightly farther back than said. Item number two, the strict application of the code standards for which a variance is sought would produce undue hardship. And for the action item number one, similar to the original application, a typical sized garage, 24 feet deep and 22 feet wide, which the applicant is at 23 feet. If it's placed on the property, staff mainly found that the, there's not undue hardship as requested from leave from the code. It's more of a preference for existing and available space. And then that also is the conclusion for action item two, where the X exceeding the required rear yard and 59% coverage was a result of existing use of the space and preference going forward with the proposed garage and storage space. So item number three, the applicant did not create the hardship by his or her own actions. For both of these items, again, the current property configuration is partly a result of the applicant and current owners preferred use of the property. The addition of the guest house, for example, takes up 96.93 square feet of that required rear storage area. So again, partly a result of their own actions. Item number four, the variance request, it does not harm the public or impair the intended purposes of the code. Action items one and two, neither one harmed the public or intended or purposes of the code, and would also provide a positive benefit to the public with the creation of an off-street parking space. Item number five, the variance request demonstrates exceptional hardship not related to purposes of convenience. Again, with both items, the resulting property configuration and location preferences doesn't demonstrate exceptional hardship. Item number six, the variance request will not violate building fire code requirements. Both items would require building for, would not be a violation of either of those. And item number seven, the variance is the minimum variance that will afford relief for the subject standards of the code. Action item number one, and this was discussed at the original meeting, as far as the setback, the applicant has moved the garage farther back, or used to be one foot, now it's three feet. Again, and that was to prevent some of the drainage issues. And again, some of that relates to the preference for a detached garage, whether that's a hardship. And then action item number two is, as far as the minimum variance, the applicant has brought down the required rear coverage from 70% to 59%. Now, there is still some preference going on as far as the location and sizing of the garage and the storage room. And again, if the app can reduce the rear yard coverage to 200 square feet, the variance would not be required. So staff found that in both cases, the variance is not the minimum that would afford relief for the subject standards of the code. So for action item number one, consideration of variance from the required 10-yard rear yard setback and five-yard side yard setback, the commission may approve, approval of conditions or deny the variance application. The commission may also continue the application. And staff recommendation is to deny the variance application for action item number one with findings on page 11 and 12 of staff report. And again, you can see the variance criteria there, staff finding that the variance application met four and six, and not all of the seven. And for action item two, consideration of variance from the required rear yard coverage limit, the commission may prove, prove conditions or deny the variance application, the commission may also continue the application. And so with action item number two, staff recommends denying the variance application for action item number two with findings on page 11 and 12 of staff report. And you can see the variance criteria there, where it met four and six, and not all of the seven. So that sums up just the presentation. So again, if you have any questions on this, or any items, find the staff report. From there.
Okay, thank you, Emery. Any questions to staff at this point from the commission? Please raise your hand. And we'll start with Commissioner Schacter. I'm afraid you're gonna have to repeat everything, you weren't right.
Sorry, Emery, without without going to an attached garage, which I'm assuming from your presentation could be possible, but without going to attached, how close to the house can the garage move in your opinion without creating excessive drainage problems? Did you, did you or the engineering report or the applicant come up with a distance that says, this is how close we can get without the drainage problems from water or snow runoff?
Sure, so applicant discussed this, they came at the distance that they are because the way the the drainage comes off the roof of the primary structure, any closer, it would be journeying right onto the garage. And so five feet would be your standard building separation distance for building code. You can go closer than five feet and still be detached, you just have to follow building code requirements for doing that as far as materials and construction. So five feet separation would be the least you could go without having additional requirements. And I'm, and the comment about detached versus attached was just that, that preference exists.
Right. And the, the, if he moves to a three-foot alley setback, what's the distance? Is he then five feet from the house to the garage?
So the applicant, the original application was for a one-foot setback. The three-foot setback is a result of the applicant shrinking the garage. It was 25 feet foot garage in depth, now it's a 23-foot garage.
What would be the distance, what would be the distance from the main house structure to the garage with that three-foot setback and that, and the smaller garage dimensions?
So right, now it's five, he's at five feet, yeah.
He is at five feet, okay. And the other question I had, thank you. I know the Housing Commission came, I don't remember if council accepted it for ADUs. We came up with a new downtown alley setback, was that five feet, do you recall? Not for garages, but for ADUs.
For ADU, yes, I believe that was a five-foot setback.
Five-foot, okay. That's all my, and I understand that's different than a garage, that's, that's all the questions I have at this point, thank you.
Thank you, and Commissioner Gross Cup, please.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Emery. Could you just talk a little bit about the 40%, I'm gonna say rear yard coverage requirement, and there's a variance to that? Basically, the idea is that we have that standard so that, you know, there is yard in the back of the main structure. It's not large outbuildings, or maybe two housing units, or could you just talk a little bit about why we have that and why 40%?
There, so the required rear yard setback, and again, the way it's calculated is the lot width by the required setback zoning district. So that's creating basically a space with limitations for buildings. So if you had a lot that was already built up, you still have that required rear yard setback to ensure at least some open space. And again, the 40%, I'm not sure how that number was arrived at, but that's the number that is given for the required rear yards, 40% coverage. So it's a little bit less than what you have for the total lot coverage.
Well, that's what I'm asking about, is the 40% of the rear yard coverage? And what did you just say, the whole, there's a percentage for the whole lot coverage allowed?
Yeah, yeah, so you have your entire lot coverage, so this lot is 5,000 square feet. So your total lot coverage would be 50% for everything. Now, the required rear yard is basically taking a part of the lot and creating a standard for that specific part of the lot. So the required rear yard, the threshold is 40% coverage. And that's with the image of where in the area in green, the areas of the accessory structures that we're gonna be covering that required rear yard area.
And reading your memo, basically, we're talking about 200 square feet, is that difference between 59% down to 40?
So the requirement is, so 40% of 500 square feet would be, they would be allowed 200 square feet. Right now, the application, the way it stands with the existing guest house is at 292.93 square feet. So they're in excess of 92 square feet, which ends up being 59%. Yeah.
Catherine, I think you just froze up. I think we'll move on, thank you. Commissioner Shaver.
Gotten out of Zoom mode already, it's only been a week. In the case of properties, adjacent properties having structures built in close proximity, what, what does the code say about the minimum separation between structures on, on adjacent properties? And it might, it might be a, it might be a building code, it might be a.
Okay, so you, you would mean the hypothetical, if there were, like, say, a structure on, to the north of this property, what would be the minimum distance? Is that?
Correct, correct, yeah.
So, well, first part of that would be if there was the property to the north, that property would have to observe the five-yard side yard setback in this specific case, which again, in with building code, you have that standard five-foot building separation. You can get closer, but then you have to make accommodations with what you build with and what you do with that.
Material, materials.
Five, five feet is basically your standard.
Right. But in this case, there, there, what, two or three on the side now? The side yard?
So in this case, on the side yard, there's a two-yard, excuse me, two-foot side yard setback property line.
Right. So an adjacent property owner couldn't ask for a variance to come within two feet unless they, what, create a one-hour separation, I presume, is, would be the standard?
So if the property to the north wanted to build two feet from their property line, yes, you have, you would have a four-foot building separation distance, which again, would get into building code, you'd have to meet building code to have a smaller distance of five feet.
So would it be a reasonable request in this case to ask the applicant to build to that standard? Being so close to the property line?
I mean, as commission, you have the ability to add conditions to, if you approve. So I feel like that could be a condition for approval. If you added that.
And I don't remember, are there fenestrations on that, on that side? Currently in the design?
You mean like?
Windows or doors?
Overhang?
No, windows or doors.
What was that?
Windows or doors?
Windows or doors, no.
Okay.
No, on the north side of the garage, it's just a straight wall.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? Commissioner Schacter, please. You muted.
Thank you, Emery, if I understand, the variance for rear yard coverage, the applicant, the applicant reduced the garage, which already is, there's a slight room maybe to do that, but if the storage shed was reduced by ninety-some feet, then that variance would not, there'd be no issue with that variance, is that correct? He'd be within the rear yard coverage?
So the rear yard coverage, just by eliminating space in the storage space, it would need to come from the area that's in the required rear yard coverage area. So one change, if you notice on your staff report, the applicant did, they did reduce the size of the storage space. The original design had a depth of 14 feet, and it was reduced to 12 feet. But that reduction occurred outside of the required regard zone.
So how much would he have to reduce it to eliminate this particular variance within that required zone?
So right now, the application, the way it's designed, is in excess of 92.93 square feet. And again, that extra, the change in coverage was a result of the increased setback.
Okay. So the, but the variance could be, that, that issue, the variance could be dealt with strictly within the storage structure, either by where it's placed, or eliminating it, or reducing it further?
So this, this is correct. If you took out the storage space entirely, the coverage would be at about 39%. It would be underneath 200 square feet, if, I mean, there's other ways, yeah.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you, and Commissioner Sipperly, please.
Thanks, Emery. I was noticing on the staff report in your chart of previous design and revise that the distance from the existing house was listed at six feet for both of them. And I'm having a hard time on the. And I'm having a hard time on the original drawings, making out if that says six feet or five feet. It does kind of look to me like they have reduced it from six feet, five feet, and then I'm wondering if they moved the whole garage, why haven't they gained a little bit more with lot coverage? And, um, I also wanted to comment that I see Sumner's, um, um, response to maybe relocating the storage element outside of the required rear yard as being a solution to help um, these guys, can I, maybe, maybe you can blow up the drawings a little bit bigger than I can see and clarify the distance to the original?
Just a second.
I just did that, and it says six feet.
One second. Marco, you said you blew up the drawing?
I did, I just blew it up and I saw six, but then again.
Okay, so on the revised, um, with the one, with the pictures of the church parking lot, it's at five.
So five.
Revised drawing.
So we're basically thirty feet from the back of the original house to the lot line.
So again, the way the, the rear yards.
Yeah, thirty-two feet, I guess. So they did move the garage one foot closer to the existing structure to within its five-foot kind of limitations of changing materials. Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Thank you, I guess I looked at the old drawing, I found a new drawing that does say five feet. Okay, excellent, any, any other questions? To staff? No, we'll see none, thank you, uh, would the applicant care to? Comment on their item?
Yes, uh, hi, thanks, thanks guys for meeting with us again.
Please say, same for the record?
Oh, Kurt Carruth, eight-twenty Bennett Avenue.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, yeah, so after comments from last meeting, um, I revised my drawing to kind of show more of the existing conditions of the alley. The, so the, the garage, I shrank two feet and pushed it a foot towards the house to get our three-foot thing, that, uh, three-foot setback that was requested. Um, on the drawing, if you look at the, I've called out the, um, you actually see, there's actually, it says we're actual track of alley on the drawing. So our alley is actually, it kind of, it kind of veers away from the back of our property. And so, and there's a, there's a difference in, in the floor of our, of our backyard, or whatever, the, the grade of our backyard is about two feet lower than the surface of the alley. It may be twenty-two inches, but it's, it's, it's pretty close to the two feet. And so we have, we have a grade change there, pretty much at the, at the lot line, from the lot line to the edge of the actual track of the alley. It's, I mean, it's a slope, so it definitely slopes to my house. And so I'm a little concerned with that crack there between the lot line and the back of the storage unit. So we're gonna have a two-foot hole there, uh, and I'm just, when you're in the, if you look at the, if you look at the pictures at the bottom of the revised two-point-one, you can kind of see how much space is back there. And I've, I've driven around alleys a lot in town, just kind of gauging, you know, what alleys, and honestly, I think, but our alley in this area at least is, is probably the biggest one in the town. I don't know of another one that's bigger, you know, especially the, the second picture to the left, where you kind of see the pile on the right, there's kind of some stuff leaning against the wall. That's thirty-seven feet from the back of our lot line to the face of Mr. Gerbas's building. And so I'm just, all I'm really saying with that is to let you know that that is huge back there. And my only comment on that is that the difference between, uh, the track of the alley and the back of our house, I mean, it's, it's six-one and five-eights at the corner, and it goes up to six-seven and a half at the face of the garage. And my only concern was, is if somebody were to park back there, try to park back there, I don't know, we could have an issue with the hole, because I wasn't planning on, you know, my, my garage already, I'm gonna have to, it's gonna have, I'll have to work with Matt about, about how I connect my garage to the alley. Um, and I'm happy to do that, so I mean, it's, and again, with Matt too, I mean, he had, he had comments about the, the pilings or the piers there. I'm happy to work with Matt on that too, but when I talked to the structural engineer, he was saying that these piers would probably have to go down eight, nine feet or so. And then a traditional foundation is only gonna be going down below, you know, frost, so it's only three to three-six below. And I understand Matt's position where if you have to dig a big hole, hole back there for the sewer, sewer line repair or something, you've got an issue, you know, that you could undermine the foundation of both, I mean, it's, you know, you could cave in on the, on the sewer and also the house. Yeah, the alley, the alley is six-seven and a half from the new, new revised, and then six-one and five-eights. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah. So I mean, it's, um, I think with, and also the, one other comment to the, on Emery's staff report, he had mentioned that our house is set back a little bit more than most of the houses on the lot, which also kind of contributes a little bit to that rear lot issue, you know? So I think that if we, if our house, and we didn't put our house where it is, but if, if our house was more in line with the other houses, maybe that ninety-two square feet is not an issue. But I think it would be close, so, um, but yeah, I'm happy to work with Matt on, you know, any kind of infrastructure stuff that I need to do. Mr. Shaver's, Commissioner Shaver's comment about doing a one-hour wall, we're happy to do that too, on that. On the north wall, I'd be happy to do, there's no windows, but I don't think you're allowed windows on a lot line anyways. But we're, we'd be happy to do a one-hour wall there, and, um, yeah, and the five-foot from the back of the house is, um, I didn't know that was kind of code, you know, or whatever you wanted to keep in part, so, but that works, and it's kind of, we, we're trying to keep, we, we've got a garden, an above-grade garden on the other side, so we're trying to keep a passageway there where we can kind of walk behind the house to get to the garden. That's what I got.
Okay, quite a bit, thank you. Any questions to the applicant from the commission? Everybody's clear? Maybe someone will come up in a minute. I think we took public comment last time, from what I remember, I don't think there were very many, if any. Did we get any more sent in to City Hall? That need to be read? Into the record?
Uh, Marco, I don't believe so, um, I mean, Gretchen could confirm if she received anything, I did not receive anything. So the only thing we had were, there were several letters from neighbors in support of the project that were included in the, uh, packet, and then also the letter that was read into the record at the previous meeting, that's, that's it.
Marco, this is Gretchen, uh, Emery's correct, I didn't receive any additional comments about this application.
Okay, great, thank you very much, and we're not gonna reopen the public portion for tonight's continued hearing. So, uh, if there's no more questions to, uh, either the applicant or staff, I will, oh, let's see, entertain a motion. We have two action items, and I need to get to the staff report here really quickly, so hang on. Just a second. There it is. Um, action item, let's see, we have action, I have a variance request, and action item number two, another variance request. So we'll start with action item number one. I'm entertaining a motion in planning item forty-three dash twenty, advance request to allow for construction of a three-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot garage with one-hundred-and-sixty-eight square-foot storage rooms, setback three feet from the rear lot line and two feet from the side yard lot line.
Marco, I'll make a motion.
Thanks Catherine, go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion to, um, approve this variance request, action item one of, oh man, do I have to do the whole thing? Oh, so forty-three dash twenty, the garage variance for the first variance. What's the findings on page? It's cut off on my report, but maybe twelve or something?
Eleven and twelve.
Eleven, and I do think that this particular variance, and I don't know if I feel the same about the second variance, has logic to it, the idea of increasing street, you know, giving a little more space on that front street is really a challenging place to park. It, uh, makes sense to, um, take a vehicle off the street, and I do think the applicant has met, um, the findings with the changes since we last saw this. You know, and I, so I think the idea of the garage and the three feet from the back and two from the side, um, I would suggest approval.
Okay, thank you Catherine, now a small little, um, thing I gotta ask you to do is the findings at this point on the staff report are based, uh, for denial, or are written for denial, so we need to just counter those.
Do you need me to go through that?
Yes, please.
So I would suggest that the first finding, these are the variance criteria in our code, and we have seven criteria that must be met. And I would say that the property does have an exceptional shape, topography, it is in the old area of our community, the original house has set back some from Bennett. They have already received a variance for the, um, guest house on the one corner, so there are, um, or they, I don't know, it's the property, exceptional shape, topography and building configuration exist. For the second, um, application of the codes would not produce undue hardship, we have support from the neighbors, we've looked at this twice. It, so it, um, maybe I'm not reading this one right, but it would be the opposite of that. The applicant has had a part in the creation, so I think the applicant has actually worked hard to, um, avoid hardship here with their revised plan for does not harm the public, I agree that it does not harm the public, so I think that one actually was met. Variance request, it does, it does not demonstrate. There's too many knots, there's two in that one. Do we have a place in our report where we have the variance that are just written as they should be, I guess, up above? So the variance here, um, for, for does not harm the public, so I think in fact it does meet that. The applicant has agreed to work with our engineering and public works departments. And it says here in the staff report how it will, um, help to relieve high demand for on-street parking, five. I think this one was met, six. Does require, it does not violate building or co-fire code, and it is the minimum, um, that would afford relief, I think, with this revised. I think that was long-winded, sorry about that.
It's all good, thank you, uh, for that Catherine, sorry to put you through this, but you gotta have the opposite of what's stated, so. I think we have a motion to approve action item number one. Just a second, even if we just want to discuss it.
For discussion, I would second.
Thank you Sumner, any discussion on this item?
I think, um, one, one thing, uh, would be to consider Catherine's conditions. For example, Commissioner Shaver and the applicant's condition about the north side of the garage meeting, um, meeting code, did we determine that it was less than that five-foot separation, or could be depending on the neighbor? So George, would that be a condition you would want on this?
Uh, well, it would, I, you know, I'm not in favor of this, but yeah, I would say at a minimum that, you know, there shouldn't be an, um, a potential burden on the neighbor, um, and the applicant has indicated that they would be willing to do that. And, uh, whether one hour is correct, I like the way your language was to, to meet the fire code or potential, potential code situation, however, however that's best expressed. So, yes.
Okay. So that would take an amended motion, is that correct, Mr. Chairman?
If we want to add, if we want to add conditions, yes, but if it's, if we may want to talk about if there's any additional conditions, then just this will. Um, I don't know, and if, 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 then we only have to amend the motion once. Um, are you good, Sumner?
Yeah, I guess, um, I, the other condition, um, I guess other, other conditions, um, whether we vote yes or no would be, um, involving the indemnity clause, if that's not already, I don't, I don't know if that condition's in there with, that Emery's put in there, and a condition that the, um, final, the final, um, design and construction, um, meet the, um, the approval of the public works regarding the, um, piers and, and/or foundation of the garage. I think those were all discussed at some point.
Would, would you think that that's already in there in the findings, or?
Well, I don't, it's not in the findings, and I don't.
See any conditions listed?
I don't see any other conditions, so, I don't, if, if the motion were to be approved, those conditions I think should be in there.
Okay, fair enough, so we have two at this point, and everybody's clear, I would hope.
Well, that would be, that would be three, I guess, Mr. Chairman, one would be the, the code for less than, uh, less than five-foot distance between residences, one would be an indemnity clause protecting the city from any construction or damage, uh, based on alley, and the third one would be, uh, final public works approval about the design of the, of the, um, piers or foundation.
Okay, fair enough, sounds good. That's three, uh, if you're done, I'll move on to Commissioner Zippel.
Thanks, um, I am having issues with a few of our, um, variance requirements, namely number five and number seven. Five being that the placement of the garage is not related to convenience. It was stated by the applicant that they are trying to keep five feet between the original house and the garage to access the side garden, however, that is certainly a matter of convenience, um, since the applicant is willing to use, uh, one-hour fire ratings on the north side of the house, he could also do so on the west side and bring that garage closer, so I'm having a hard time justifying number five, and then of course, number seven, if, whether or not it is the minimum variance to afford relief. Now, I would like to say that I think this, um, is an appropriately placed garage, unfortunately, it is outside of the setback, so I'm kind of torn, because this is the sort of infill that, um, you know, that we do sort of like to encourage. However, we are bound by these, um, these variance criteria, and I am personally having a hard time justifying approving this variance. Thanks.
Okay, thank you, any more discussion?
Yeah.
Commissioner Schacter, please.
Well, after two meetings, it, it seems to me it's not our job to redesign the project, uh, anytime we're done with the variance, however. it's not our job to redesign the project anytime we're done with the variance, however, and I don't wanna, I mean, there's a second variance that, that is tied to this, I if the primary goal is to provide a garage with off-street parking, I believe that could be met with a different presentation. Some of the other things may not be necessary, so again, I'm wondering if I'm, if, if this were to be denied tonight, Emery, would the applicant have to come back with a whole new application? If we actually denied the variance or variances?
So if you deny both variances, you're asking when and if the it would be able to reapply with a different design, is that?
That's what they'd have to do, would be reapply.
Couldn't they also appeal to council, is this a re-final decision?
Well, I'm just wondering, I know it's frustrating to the applicant, if, if, if if this commission thinks that a garage is doable and reasonable and, and could meet variance, our variance requirements, that we are we allowed to continue again and let the applicant reconsider their proposal like we did last time?
So you're saying, your second part of questions, first question is if you denied it, what the options would be, and the second question is if you could just continue it design, is that correct?
Yes.
Perhaps Gretchen or Jen, could you comment on the continuing it or the appeals process, and that is familiar?
Yes, certainly, and then Anna, if you're ready to talk about the, the timeframes between. You can certainly continue this application again. And, or you could deny, and the applicant then has the right to appeal to city council. And then I am right now trying to look up the timeframe, so if the applicant wanted to redesign the project, and if it was a substantial revision, then we could consider it at a another planning and zoning commission meeting that would, he would have to reapply, and then we would consider it in the appropriate timeframes. If, however, he wanted to come back to the commission and have the same plan and have you reconsider the same plan at a later date, there is a timeframe, and right now off the top of my head, I can't find that, but I wanna say it's a year, maybe, Jen and Anna, you could correct me.
That's my recollection as well, that it's a year, but I'm also looking.
The appeal deadline, it's, what I'm reading says seven days.
If they were to resubmit a substantially similar application, what is the timeframe, and I think it is a year.
So is there, is there a, and Gretchen, you mentioned substantial redesign, is there a, should the applicant choose, and should this commission choose, is there a way to continue as we did last month? Allow the applicant to make more additional revisions that would may not be considered major, that might meet some of the concerns that have been expressed here tonight, and come back quickly?
Yes, certainly, and that's the point of a continuance. You give specific, clear and specific direction as to what you wanna see. And then he, the applicant can come back at the next regular meeting.
Okay, alright.
In the same vein, Sumner?
Big part?
I have a same, similar question in that same vein, maybe Gretchen. Basically, let's say the vote was to approve the first variance, but deny the second, which is allowing the applicant a response, but keeping the it would, it would result down then, I'm, I'm guessing, to staff level of a revised site plan that would potentially meet you know, within the first variance, but potentially not within the second, and then staff could look at that, right? And evaluate, and if it was acceptable, move this project forward, if that were an outcome.
I'm not sure that I completely followed what you were saying, so can you, can you repeat?
Well, I think what I'm trying to understand is that if a vote were taken tonight, and it was potentially it could be for both variances to be denied, which means they have to start over, if one variance was allowed, so the application can stay in the process, so to speak, but potentially the forty percent rear yard coverage one was not as part of the feedback from this commission. Essentially, that forces the applicant to redesign the site plan and for staff to make sure it follows with the approved condition that's been given, so it, I think what I'm asking is that it's a third way from what Sumner said, either out or continued.
Well, may I, Catherine, if, if I understand, let, let's say hypothetically, the first variance was granted. And the second one wasn't Gretchen, and the applicant came back to you and said I'm gonna put the garage in, and that's all, there's no variance remaining, could that project move forward?
Yes.
Okay, is that along the hypothetical lines, Catherine, that you're talking about?
Yeah, I think in short, it would maybe require a relook at the storage part to meet, or some way to get down to the not
Four, four, forty percent correct.
The, the provision on the substantially similar, did you find it, Jen? Following denial of an application, so if you deny it, then you cannot consider it if it's the same or substantially the same within one year, unless there's a substantial change to circumstances, or new information is available, or the new application is materially different.
So, Anna, how would you interpret that in this hypothetical? That hypothetically, if this commission approved number, the first variance with conditions, okay? And turned down the second one, and the applicant went to the planning department, Gretchen said, well, we're going to build the garage as designed with the, with the conditions in that variance, and we're not gonna do anything with the shed, so therefore, there's no second variance required, could they proceed without another hearing or waiting a year?
If they can proceed with the project without the need of that second variance, in other words, if they're gonna build it in conformity with the code and not need the variance, then they can, I would think.
They could proceed, okay, that, that's my question, I think that might have been Catherine's as well, perhaps, I don't know, thank you.
I mean, you, it may not hurt to get input from the applicant on whether
I understand.
They, you know, I'm, if they'd rather have a denial, or if they wanna, they're willing to bring it back.
Right.
So I agree with that, but ahead of that, Marco, can I amend the motion, please?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay, so for action item one, which is a variance request about a minimum setback of three from rear lot, rear lot line and two feet from side yard lot line, I'd like to add the conditions that it does meet the seven required variance standards, and that we have conditions. And I had been cut out by my Zoom, so I missed the George Shaffer one, but whatever Commissioner recommended on the north side of the, the structure standard conditions that would be included with any action like indemnification of the city. You know, whatever those would normally be standard per any condition of approval. Second would be working with and finding agreement with both public works and engineering on foundation and other concerns that those reviewers mentioned in their reviews. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you, we have amended the motion.
I will second the amended motion.
Second, okay, great, excellent. That works.
Can I ask a point of clarification?
Yeah, Jen.
Is, Commissioner Grosscup, is your first condition that they meet the fire code requirements for buildings that are less than five feet from each other, is, I mean, I think that's what George was saying.
Yes, and that would be on the north side, thank you.
Okay, so motion and a second with additional conditions, any more discussion on this? Oh, by the way, not that it matters before I call for the question, but Catherine, I feel with you one hundred percent on how you made the motion, and I'm okay with moving forward with this.
Well, and, and I, I'm not sure, Chairman, if we have the ability to receive feedback from our applicant before we take a vote, I think that might be helpful to know.
About our hypothetical scenario?
And continuance or not, basically, so I can, I think we allowed that actually last time with same process, same state process.
Did we, okay, maybe we can do that, just so, to see if, if they can work with that, please, would you, Kurt, would you care to comment on that?
Um, yeah, I mean, it's, I, I understand everything what you guys are saying, but it's, we've got a shed that's a hundred and twenty-four square feet. And I'm pretty much building a shed of a hundred and sixty square feet and building a garage. It seems, I don't, I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's like the, my neighbors and people in the community are in support of getting a car off the street. So I just, so, I mean, I think we could, I think I could definitely maybe whittle down the storage a little bit more. It's kind of frustrating to me that we had a meeting and you guys gave me four or five things to do, and I did them all. And then now it's, you know, we're kind of in the, you know, we made a U-turn, really, it seems like. So it's, you know, I, I could definitely whittle it down a little bit, I don't think I wanna wait a year to reapply, probably just not do it, I guess, at that point. I don't know, so that's, I mean, I, that's definitely what I could offer, I, the, the three foot still works, we have the issue with the crack between the alley and the house. And then, you know, I think I could whittle the storage down a little bit more, but, I mean, we all have lawnmowers, we all have rakes, we all have you know, all that kind of stuff that, you know, that, I mean, the, the garage is about as small, I think, as you can get, it's longer a little bit longer than you have to absolutely have, it's twenty-three feet now. But, you know, I mean, typically, when I design a garage, I'm at twenty-two, so it's a foot longer than, you know, I typically build. And it's relatively narrow for a one-car garage, so it's, you know, it is what it is, I mean, it's, you know, the storage was for that kind of stuff that I can't hang a lawnmower, I guess I can't hang a lawnmower on the wall, but nowadays, you used to couldn't hang a lawnmower on the wall, so.
All right, thank you, maybe it helped the commission a little bit, I hope it did. Again, we have a motion and a second to approve action item number one. And if there's no more discussion, I will call for the question.
Commissioner Schachter.
Approve.
Commissioner Shaver.
Deny.
Commissioner Grosscup. Approve. Commissioner West.
Approve.
Commissioner Sipperly.
Approve.
Commissioner Dem.
Approve.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Jen, thank you, Commission. And we are moving on to action item number two, another variance request in planning item, I think it was forty-three twenty to allow for construction of a three hundred and twenty-one square foot garage with a hundred and sixty-eight square foot storage room, which combined with the existing guest house will exceed the forty percent required rear yard coverage.
I'll make a motion.
Commissioner Zippel, please.
I would like to make a motion on planning item forty-three dash twenty, action item two, variance request to deny the, deny the variance request for exceeding the rear yard coverage.
Thank you, we have a motion to deny.
With the findings on page eleven and twelve.
Thank you, and included findings. Second. And a second, any discussion on this? Commissioner Schachter.
I would just comment that I think our discussion on the prior variance covered a lot for for, for the applicant, the commission, and I think the findings in this case are are pretty strict, the, the applicant does have the several options to eliminate that variance request, so I will be supporting the motion.
Thank you, anybody else? No more discussion? Well, I'm gonna say that I'm gonna swing the other way, I think he should be allowed to move forward with what he has planned, it's his backyard, he's downtown. Higher density to me is okay, whether it's buildings, whether it's storage or garages, different uses, I have absolutely no issue with this. He did shrink some of it down, it came from seventy percent to fifty-nine percent. Maybe it could have been a tad more, but he did make, the applicant did make an effort to, to fit it in a little better, so I have no problem with the application, the only problem I have is with the variance criteria. And at this point, I will not vote for denial. And if, any, nobody else has a, any more discussion on this, we'll call for the question.
Commissioner Sipperly. Yes for denial. Commissioner Dem.
No.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Commissioner Grosscup.
Yes.
Commissioner Schachter.
Yes.
Commissioner West.
No.
Motion passes.
Okay, thank you, thanks, Commission, thanks to the applicant. Good luck with your project, not sure where it'll end up, but we'll look forward to seeing it. Thank you. At this point, I think we'll move forward with to, onto our new items for tonight. Which is, let's see, item six on the agenda. And first, does anybody need a break before we jump in, by the way?
Um, Commissioner Dem, I'm going to sign off, thank you.
All right, you need to recuse, thank you, have a good night. Okay, no break, so we move forward, our first new item tonight, item A is planning item fifteen twenty, consideration of a request for preliminary plant to amend the Oasis Creek track a subdivision to allow for the construction of duplexes on lots previously platted for single-family homes. And Trent, I think you're up.
Hey, well, good evening, everyone, Trent Hyatt with Community Development, I did wanna mention, Mr. Chairman that there are some folks that are in attendance that will likely need to be moved to presenters at some point, and I can read the name of these later, but just to give you a heads up, that's gonna be Doug Pratt, Mowgli Cooper, Tate Fairbanks, Scott Grosscup, and Mary Steinbrecker.
We go ahead and do that now, in advance of the presentation?
I'll share my screen with you as well.
I can do that now, I will need those names slower, sorry.
No problem, it's gonna be Doug Pratt, Mowgli Cooper, Tate Fairbanks, Scott Grosscup, and Mary Steinbrecker.
I feel like I missed the very last person, possibly.
Mary Steinbrecker.
Perfect, thank you.
And if you all can see my screen, could you shake your head or um the presentation? Okay, thank you.
Just small.
Is it? Okay, let's see if I can switch that to a different screen. Still small?
Still small, but fine enough, good enough. I think I can see it. God forbid I have to put my glasses on.
Okay, um, so this is a preliminary plat for an amendment to the Oasis Creek Track Day subdivision. Um, and and that property, which is located in Oasis Creek subdivision, is Zoned PUD R3 Plan Unit Development Multi-Family Residential. Currently at the site today, it is vacant and it's a 5.278 acre, seven parcel site. Um, and you can see um that is circled in yellow here, uh and then there is a southwest view looking towards Red Mountain on the bottom left of the slide. And just a little bit of history on this, on this property and the larger neighborhood. The annexation and PUD zoning Oasis Creek occurred in 1980 and identified Track A um as allowing for up to 50 multifamily units. Back in 2016, some of you were on the Planning and Zoning Commission when there was a request for a subdivision without development plan to allow six single-family home sites. The average size of those six lo- lots are approximately 26,000 square feet. And there was one remaining open space tract that is approximately 74,000 square feet. There was a variance at that time that was granted for the requirement for a sidewalk along North Traver Trail adjacent to the to the residential lots. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the subdivision to allow for duplexes for a total of 12 on the six existing development lots of of that subdivision. Um, I I will note that um today, the Oasis Creek neighborhood is exempted from um requiring sidewalks or a payment in lieu of by the engineering standards. And just to to make it clear, one of the reasons why we're here tonight is because during that subdivision in 2016, it was made very clear by the applicant that these were intended for single-family homes. Um, in addition, that um determination or or clarification was also made to the neighborhood folks. So since that was part of the applicant's presentation and intention, we wanted to make sure that this received any additional amendment that was necessary by both the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as City Council, who was had the final determination on the application. Uh, to go through the preliminary plat review approval criteria, which are outlined in section 706060 B3 F4, one is consistency with the comprehensive plan. You'll see the that the Oasis Creek subdivision is is shown in the yellow on the um map to the to the right, which is from the comprehensive plan and identifies this lot as well as a larger subdivision as single-family residential. The single-family residential designation does specify that that is for single-family homes as well as for duplexes, which is being requested. Um, it appears this application addresses numerous community goals that are outlined in that plan. Um, all of these kind of surround uh the objective of infill development. But in doing so, it promotes economic development, preserves a small-town character, convenient transportation choices, infill development, social diversity, as well as preserving natural resources. Two, will comply with the applicable zoning district standards. It does require comply with the area and density requirements that are outlined by the Oasis Creek subdivision PUD. Um, again, that was uh outlined for multifamily residential, although there are some area requirements. And a point of note, there are no changes in the boundaries of the size or the setbacks or anything else that's associated with this request. Three, will comply with the used dimensional design and development standards in the code. The Oasis Creek subdivision covenants actually provide for their own uh related development standards. Um, so that's not, um, it wasn't taken into play with into play with consideration this application as it's just for the request for duplexes. We didn't get into the specific design of any of the structures. That would be at a later date and at the staff level. Uh, again, the parking variance no longer applies um to this application because it was based on a site-specific development plan back in 2016. So if if it were still required, they would they would need to obtain an additional variance for that. However, as I mentioned, this neighborhood is exempted in our current um sidewalk requirements. Four, provides layout of lots, streets, blocks, driveways, utilities, drainage, and other public facilities and services designed to minimize the amount of disturbance. Again, um, you know, this is an existing lot within neighborhood Track A um that provides access, utilities, topography, and facility services. Um, this property was already um entitled for development previously. We're just changing that intensity. Vehicle trips are expected to double um based on the additional units um for a total of 114 per day. And that would be 10 in the AM peak hour, 13 in the PM peak hour. It with this application, drainage is actually addressed on the uh larger development proposal as opposed to previously it was intended to be designed on a lot-by-lot basis. Um, and the layout also continues the use of the gentler slopes of the slot um for the earth disturbing activities related to site development and building. Five, provides evidence of public water and sewer. Again, utilities already exist in the area and are available to serve the site, identifies and actively mitigates non-natural hazards. Um, again, a report from 2016 did not identify any specific hazards that would limit a subdivision of the property. Um, as is usually the case, we will require site-specific subsurface geotechnical reports prior to the building of any structure. That would just be so that um any of the design recommendations could be incorporated into those foundations. Seven, if applicable, proposes reasonable project phasing in terms of master structure capacity. Um, again, you know, the development of each lot individually seems like an appropriate appropriate phasing for, you know, duplexes on each one of these lots. Design standards are regulated by the the PUD covenants. Um, we do kind of as a courtesy, um here in the Building Department, Community Development Department, we we make folks aware that there are um AAC in Architectural Control Committee in in the neighborhood that has to approve of the design of homes prior to their being developed. Um, and you know, I'm sure you're gonna hear some of the conversations tonight about um multifamily dwellings being allowed on lots as opposed to tracks in the neighborhood. Previously, the applicant obtained a variance from the ACC to to allow um the single-family homes on these lots. And we expect that they would also have to obtain a variance to allow for duplexes from the AAC. The the applicant did um consider eliminating construction altogether on Lot 6 to address some of the concerns of the neighborhood with this proposal. However, um, you know, they they are sticking with the six lots now. Um, you know, we want to make it clear that municipal governments, we do not administer neighborhood or homeowner association covenants. However, we don't see anything in this request, or if it were approved by the city as a limiting factor for the neighborhood to enforce their own covenants or um a way to circumvent those covenants. We have included a recommended condition that both um states that as well as, you know, clarifies that these lots would be limited to duplexes moving forward um and based on this request. Comments and staff recommendation. Uh, we did receive some comments from engineering a while back before some of these sidewalk issues were addressed, so you'll see that in their comments. Um, and and I want to point out that I did um add additional comments that I received from Friday um to today to your your packet, so you should be able to click on those instead of clerk. Um, but we received comments from engineering stating that, uh, of course, there needs to be a master drainage report, um information related to like ge- geologic hazards, the need for an HOA to maintain improvement areas, sidewalk control concerns, utility needs, and general building and site development requirements. We received a significant amount of um comments from adjacent property owners, folks in the neighborhood that were either in opposition or have concerns about this proposal. Uh, we did receive one um letter or email of support. Section 706030 G1D um allows you to recommend a city council uh approval, approval with conditions or denial of the application. You may also request additional information and continue it to a future meeting. Planning staff does recommend um approval with conditions, as is outlined on page seven of your staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you, Trent, for this thorough presentation. Back to the commission, any uh any questions to staff at this point? Please raise your hand. And we'll start with Commissioner Zippoli, please.
Thanks for that explanation, Trent. Um, the my first concern I have is the mention of the ACC and the HOA covenants. Um, in reading some of the comments from concerned citizens, uh, does it seem like they would need approval from the HOA before they come to us for this um change in density?
Uh, you know, again, um, we um do not necessarily uphold or address specific HOA or or neighborhood covenants. So the answer i- is technically no. Uh, you know, I mean, have we worked with the AAC in the past? Yes, as kind of a courtesy at the staff level, but no. Um, we we're not required to uphold, you know, anything that's outlined in their covenants. Um, you know, we are, however, obligated to, you know, act on any application that is submitted to the city. Um, we are certainly trying to not be in conflict um where we can. But, you know, I I think there are some, maybe some concerns at the neighborhood level that staff may not be able to address directly based on our reg- our regulations. However, um, you know, we have tried with the condition that we provided to to maybe address some of those concerns that folks have.
So just because we were to uh potentially approve this does not mean that the developer has permission to go ahead. They would obviously need the HOA approval before they could proceed.
That is our understanding and and our intent um to not further muddy those waters.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions? So just real quick, Trent, the the so the let's see if I understand this. The only reason we're seeing this is because it's a PUD. It's within a PUD because don't we allow duplexes on city, single-family lot zoning anyway?
We do, Marco, and it actually doesn't really necessarily have anything to do with the PUD. The the reason why you're seeing this is because, you know, you 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 often see that standard condition in in all of our applications. It says, you know, the application has to adhere to um things that the applicant said or intentions that were outlined in the in the application. It was made clear in the previous application that the intent of the subdivision was for single-family homes. So we didn't feel like at the staff level that we could say, sure, you can do duplexes. You know, the PUD in the neighborhood originally allowed it for 50 units. Um, no, we wanted to make sure that the subdivision amendment kind of went through the process, that folks understood we're changing that original approval to allow for duplexes now.
So this whole thing was based on that one line in the last um within the last approval of those lots that said single-family homes.
Uh, that's right, Marco, but I mean, that's a that was a pretty significant finding uh previously, and then, you know, we're doubling that density. So again, we wanted the authority, which is you and City Council, that they granted that subdivision to understand the change that being requested.
Okay, makes sense. Thank you, Trent. Um, Commissioner, I don't know who's first. Oh, Commissioner Shacter.
I would like to just clarify, Trent, since PUD and annexation and city code and all that kind of overlaps, and I want to um clarify what I think Commissioner Sipperly said. Our approval, should we approve this? It's basically saying that the Planning and Zoning Commission is okay with changing those lots from single-family to duplex only. But it is not permission to proceed until the subdivision grants approval as well.
Yeah, you know, it it's getting a little tricky here. I I think the point is
I don't want, I don't want tricky. I don't want anybody
Well, no, there's there there. I'm not trying, I'm not trying to indicate anything, you know, that's that's a way around in terms of the city's approval or decision on this application. We are paving the way at the city level to allow for duplexes on these lots. We understand that there are potentially additional um hurdles at the neighborhood level that this applicant will have to to achieve or to deal with in this process. We acknowledge those um and we're not disregarding them. Um, and as if you look at the condition that's recommended, it's saying that, you know, this is not a waiver to anything that applies to them at the neighborhood level. This is just the 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 city requirements associated therewith.
So I have two more questions then, if you will. So that if if this, again hypothetically, were approved tonight and the applicant did nothing else but come to you with um a building application, it would not be accepted because those other issues you refer to have not been resolved?
I think we would be seeking some type of information from the neighborhood that was that was suitable to our legal staff that shows that they have addressed that issue at the neighborhood level.
Okay, and what what's different now and the 2016 application in terms of order of those resolutions, if you might be able to tell us?
Well, I I I think you might hear from from some of those folks commenting commenting tonight that the city changed the process. Um, you know, previously, I I believe that the the applicant, the Steinbreckers, went forward to the neighborhood first. Um, you know, that's not necessarily the way that it that it was processed this time. They certainly have been in contact with the neighborhood and their representatives, but I don't think that they landed on a an agreement um to date. You know, we we're obligated, we 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 received an application. We're obligated to process that application. Um, so that's why we're here now.
And my understanding from what you said is, at the prior time, they they did come to us after receiving the okay of for that variance or that um splitting the um creating single-family lots pro- from the um PUD prior to coming to planning and zoning last time. Is that correct?
That is correct. Um, you know, I I would, I want to clarify that. I don't know that that was actually required by the city. That's just the way the process worked. Okay, correct.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Commissioner Shaver, please.
Um, Trent, on Lot 7, is that going to be open space in perpetuity? Is that a part of this uh this application? Is that a guarantee, I guess, for lack of a better term?
That is an additional plat note that is recommended by staff, yes. You know, and 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 I guess that's that that, you know, it it's it's only, it's that way until somebody requests an amendment or a change to it. Um, you know, there's not like a conservation easement that's associated with that Lot 7.
Okay, so there's no guarantee somewhere down the the road that that would be um remain as open space?
I think there's a guarantee that it would remain open space until someone came back through this process to request otherwise.
Okay. And it it seems, uh, you know, it seems like we're sort of a cart before the horse scenario here in some ways. And I I don't know if that's a um uh some a decision that the applicant made um you know, going into this thing um thinking that it would be a better way to get approvals or, you know, can you speak to that at all?
I can't really. Um, George, maybe they can. I I mean, we received an application. We have processed the application accordingly. You know, I I I know that, yes, that's good.
Okay. I didn't know you were this good of a dancer, Trent.
Excellent, thank you. And any other questions to staff at this point? See no hands, so welcome.
I have a hand up there, sorry.
Oh, you took it off. There you go. I'm gonna go ahead.
Again, Trent, wading through this several hundred pages is hard. Somewhere, I don't know if it was in the annexation agreement, perhaps, and maybe Anna can pipe in. I think it was page 226, there was something that said unless exempted by the PUD. Our municipal code shall apply. How would that be interpreted in this case? Because the, the original PUD, if I understand it, did not exempt any multifamily construction on track day. So does that imply that, that P and Z and the council, our code, will override whatever the PUD wants at this time?
I don't believe so. I think that would just be for instances where there is a requirement in our code that's not necessarily addressed in, in the, the covenants for the neighborhood. Sidewalks and, and the last, the first example that comes to mind for me is the last application in the sidewalk consideration. I don't think their sidewalks are dressed at all in their, in their covenants, however, you know, they had to obtain a variance from that previously.
So I guess that what I'm, what I'm, without, without being your dancing partner, if you'll excuse me, using the shaver's analogy. I'm still want to be pretty clear that regardless of our action here. There are still conditions or actions that need be taken between the applicant and the PUD before a building permit would be issued. And I'm not sure I'm getting a clear answer on that.
Well, I mean, I guess unless there's a specific condition, right? I, I, I don't think as a condition typically under the code of issuing a building permit. The applicant needs to provide evidence that all, you know, local approvals have been received. I mean, that, I, I'm not aware of anything in the code that requires evidence of that prior to issuing a building permit unless there's a specific condition like that.
And local approval would be the.
I mean, like non, whatever approval is required it within that neighborhood. And I mean, I don't think that, that I or other staff members can even opine on what those approvals are. You know, I mean, we don't review the, the governing documents in that pri-, you know, the private governing documents. I guess I meant the private, any private approvals that are required. I'm not aware, and, and anyone, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not aware of any requirement that prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant has to present evidence that. Any private conditions, meaning not code, not ones that are issued by the municipality or any other applicable entity that. That compliance with any private conditions is required.
And private conditions would be the PUD?
No, I think the PUD is, is, becomes part of the code.
Okay.
Not, not the PUD, I mean, any covenants, any architect.
Right.
Control.
Or whatever.
Regular, whatever. We, we don't know what they are, really. I don't know what they are.
And maybe if I, if I can, I, I do just want to add, you know, again, certainly the city does not want to get in the middle of, of any requirements of the, the neighborhood or of the ACC. But what I do not want to get involved in is implementing or requiring additional improvements that are above and beyond what our code requires. By interjecting ourselves into the conversation, I think the neighborhood and the applicant still have some discussions that are necessary. And, and what those, you know, where, where they will land with those discussions, you know, I, I don't want us to be responsible for, for enforcing things that are not in our code.
And would we see this again in another time, once this is, once the request tonight is approved? Or would we see it in terms of, and the build out of each individual lot? Or is it then go to planning and, and, and if there are no variances, that's about it?
Correct, yeah. You, you're making a recommendation to city council and then, you know, any final plats would be administrative as well as the review of individual development on those lots and the buildings.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Shakti. Any other questions? No? Okay, again, welcome applicants. I assume you have picked the sequence you'd like to talk. So just state your name, so for the record, so we know who's talking, and please go ahead.
Sure, my name is Doug Pratt and I'm a planner with Land Studio and we are working with Tate Fairbanks, who's the applicant. Tate's here virtually as well. We have a number of folks, Scott Grosskup's attorney is here. Moga Cooper is here, who's been working with us. Mary Steinbrecker, the, the owner, Lydia Development is the owner, but Mary Steinbrecker is here is. I, I actually worked with Mary and Jerry Steinbrecker back in 2016 on the original seven lot subdivision. So have some, I'm familiar with that project from then. And we have since started working with Tate Fairbanks in this relationship to try and pursue duplex tracks versus single family lots on six, for six of these. Lots that are, that are proposed so that we would convert them from lots to tracks to allow for two units. One duplex on each of the tracks, one through six in the project. So I, I would like to share screen if I could, Trent. I'll go ahead and hit it here. Looks like I can do it. Thanks. So I am going to go ahead and. View full screen, so maybe. Can, can y'all see my screen? Okay. Okay, thanks. I'll go ahead and move through. You've seen this graphic before, so we have tracks A1 through A6. This is North Trevor Trail Road. Can you see my cursor? Because I'm kind of pointing with it. Can somebody, okay, thank you. I'm never sure. So again, we're illustrating two, two units each on each of these tracks. Their, the footprints illustrated are about 2,400 square feet. A7, track A7 is the open space tract, which would be restricted with a plat note to, to open space related to this project. I would hope that like any project that comes before the city, when there's a track that's slated for open space. That, that, that is a commitment from the applicant. I'm hoping you realize that's a commitment from the applicant to retain that as open space. It's our desire to do that. That's what we've made a commitment not only to, to, to the owners of this project, but also to the neighborhood. We did have a neighborhood meeting, we presented this plan, and we have lots, we've heard lots of feedback. So just want to make, let you know that track A7 is a piece that we are committing to for open space. Just want to give you a little bit of context. I know Trent showed you some maps. These are just aerial photos that I've clipped out of, out of Google Earth. So the parcel is right here, so track A is right here, that is about the entirety of the seven lots. Just for a little bit of context, these are how all the lot lines pan out. These are tracks one through six here, track seven. And in relationship to the neighboring property, we have some smaller lots over to the east of our project. On the east side of Trevor Trail, some smaller lots here that are kind of wrapped around the point of, of this project along this kind of the switchback on Trevor Trail. The lots get a little bit larger over on the, on the west side after you go around the north side of this project. So in terms of acreage, as, as Trent said, they, these tracks average about 26,000 square feet. Track seven is a bit larger. I just wanted to give you some context for kind of what this, what this looks like in relationship lot size to the, to the neighborhood. These are just kind of three dimensionally, I kind of put some, a model together this afternoon to kind of our, and last night, to try and just illustrate graphically a little bit. I'll kind of zoom in a bit here too. Again, those are kind of the unit sizes. Don't judge the architecture, please. But it's just trying to give you some idea of what the massing is related to this. The Google Earth image is three dimensional, the neighboring residences are not, but you can still get a little bit of a flavor of what the density is around the project. We are trying to cluster the density kind of with, with the, the pieces that are already developed on this, next to this tract. There is kind of a bit of open space that runs along a drainage that's on the west side of the property that's, that belongs to the Steinbrechers. Track seven actually is contiguous to that open space. And you can see from the aerial photo that there's actually a trail that will stay in place here that wraps from North Trevor Trail across the property. Over to the cul-de-sac on, on the other side. There has been a gravel path that has been put in from the trail here that wraps all the way around the edge of this property up to the north side. And at this location, there is a park up on the north side that this, that this provides access to. So from here, wrapping all the way around is a path, and then there's a path that connects across to the side. So that gravel path would stay in place, might need a little bit of improving, improving, but we can certainly work on that. But that path is what we, what we put in place for the original seven lots that were approved back in 2016. Again, taking the property lines away, just trying to give you a little bit of a flavor for this project. If you like the buildings are in scale, while there's some higher density that runs along the south side and the east side of this parcel. The lots over here are a bit larger, so we kind of feel that this density is a bit of a transition density between higher density on this side and lower density on the other. And feel like it, it makes a good transition from one neighborhood to the next in Oasis Creek. Just to go back, look, just kind of look at an overall aerial view, you can see how these paths work. There is a path that runs along here, it's a little bit skinny, but it does run along here to the north side to a park. This is the path that will stay in place to connect over to the cul-de-sac. So with that, trying to put a sketch together, my other illustrations did not really demonstrate driveways. We do have driveways that access off of North Trevor Trail. There will be a shared driveway for each of the duplexes, so there will be two units sharing, sharing a driveway. We will be restricting this driveway access to the north side of, of track six. Any access off of this lower curve becomes kind of a blind corner. So that's one of the provisions that we have, that, that was actually part of the approval back in, back in 2016. So that's essentially just kind of how the masses, the massive architecture lays out on the property and gives you a little bit of a perspective of how it relates to the neighborhood. With that, I don't have a lot of text to go over. I feel like Trent did a good job talking through compliance with the code, compliance with the standards in the code. Compliance with the, the PUD and the underlying zoning. So I'll just give you a brief summary. My brief overview is, is on a page here, this is it. So of the 5.3 acre parcel, it's zoned our three multifamily residential. We have a total residential area of about 3.6 acres, about 68% of the property. Open space of about 32%, 1.7 acres totaling the, the total 5.3 acres. Overall, the proposed density with the duplexes is one unit per .44 acres. It's about one-third open space and two-thirds developed. It is infill development, what's proposed is infill development proposed in a previously approved and plotted Oasis Creek neighborhood. It does currently have utility services and access to the parcel. The duplexes do comply with the multifamily zoning. Duplexes also do provide a diversity of housing types. I think as planners, we often try and, and look at providing a diversity of housing types for the, the diversity of people who are trying to live in our communities. Feeling like this, this is an opportunity to have a little bit more density than was previously approved, but certainly density that's compatible with the neighborhood. We're looking at single story structures with the ability for walkout level. We've talked about maybe older retirees being able to live on a single, a single story level in this neighborhood. We're talking about the indoor storage of vehicles that meet our parking requirements and we'll have additional parking spaces outside garage doors. We'll continue to have the gravel path connecting in a north-south direction from the park at the north to the neighborhood trail at the south. And we will continue to keep the east-west connection along the existing asphalt, asphalt path that is currently there. We do support the staff recommendation of approval with conditions, so we support all of the conditions that are recommended by staff. One, one variation on that theme is that just the one condition that says the, the use of lots slash tracks one through six. Shall be limited to, limited to the construction of a duplex. That concept is fine. We just want to be clear that it'll be tracks one through six, these will not be lots, they will be tracks. So just was recommending that we can change that condition to the use of tracks one through six will be limited to the construction of a duplex. That's certainly a plat note that we can put onto the, to the preliminary plat. So with that, that's kind of my quick overview, just giving you a little bit of context for how this sits within the neighborhood. And unless somebody else from my team would like to speak, you guys can raise your hand. This is our presentation, so feel free. If that's okay with the chair, is that, is that appropriate?
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, my name is Scott Grosskup. I'm an attorney with Balcom &amp; Green. Just want to say that I think Marco or Doug and Trent did a fine job presenting the application. So I don't think I really have much more that needs to be said.
Thank you. Anybody else? No, I'll see no hands. Okay, great, then.
Wait.
Yep.
So can you hear me?
I can hear you.
This is, this is, this is Mary Steinbrecker. I'm not very good at Zoom meetings, so. I just want to say that we are fully in support of this proposal with Tate. We feel that it provides and fulfills a great need in the city of Glenwood Springs. We've owned this property for over 27 years and I can't tell you how many people have come to us and asked us to build single level homes on that. Because they want to retire and they're, they want to downsize from their house and had through four levels of stairs. So I think this is absolutely appropriate for our community and I would recommend that the PNC approve the proposal. And that it is a, it's a good proposal for our, for our community.
Thank you very much for your input. Anybody else from the team? Will see none. Thank you very much for your presentation. Back to the commission for questions to the applicants. And Commissioner Shakti, please.
Thank you. Doug, could you just elaborate a little on, because I know there's differences in the PUD tract versus lot? And, and why and the differences in setbacks or conditions, if you would?
Sure, you know, the main difference in the definition of lot and tract is that lot is defined in the covenants as for single family homes. A tract is, is defined for multifamily homes. So while we're defining these tracks one through six as tracks, we are, you know, proposing conditioning that these are for duplexes. So it's not leaving it, it's not leaving the door open for multi, you know, unlimited multifamily or whatever fits on a, you know, 26,000 square foot tract. It is, it is definitely for duplexes, I think, much like we represented back in 2016, that these were single family lots. We're making the representation now that these are for a duplex on a multifamily tract, one through six.
Thank you. And is it, at this point, you're understanding that the owners of those tracks and the ultimate builders of those duplexes would be. Subject to the Oasis Creek Architectural Control Committee? Or the city's design standards and how do those apply or overlap in your interpretation?
The ACC does have review authority over residences, duplexes or single family that come in. So, so we would have to have. So um so we would have to have architectural review by the A C C. Um, and that's and that is their 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 role as architectural, it's actually A C C Architectural Control Committee is to, you know, it's our understanding that it's their role to review the architecture. So they would have to look at the architecture for the site for the for three of those sites.
And you mentioned the, I think it's eighteen inches or whatever, the gravel path that was put in as a pedestrian connector that I understand maybe degraded or whatever. Um, who's, who would be in charge of maintaining that or bringing it up to say its original condition?
Uh, there, there will be uh, you know, a a a secondary, if that's the right term, homeowners association for this parcel. So track day would, you know, have a homeowners association that relates to all of the properties within track day. Um, so so it would be the obligation, you know, for for maintenance. Um, you know, if uh if our our client would lo- would like to have, you know, outdoor maintenance control by an H O A versus individuals. Um, but but that kind of more common element of the product of the projects would be maintained by the H O A and there would have to be funding made available to make sure it's it's maintained appropriately.
And that would apply to that path?
That would, that would. That's been our discussion is to have a kind of a secondary H O A that that controls those maintains those common common elements of the project.
Thank you. That's all I have right now, Mister Chairman. Thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
Uh, thank you. And Commissioner Shaver, please.
Yeah, that I had the same question the summer about the tracks and lots and I that clarified that and what's uh, what would, assuming you have approval tonight, what's, what is your next step in the process of getting this, moving this project forward?
I, well, the next step with the city would be to uh, you know, whatever uh conditions of approval, we have conditions of approval that have been outlined by staff. So um I'm assuming if we get a a recommendation for approval, there there will be some conditions associated with it. So it's obviously going to be, you know, proceeding, uh, you know, to make sure we're meeting those conditions uh as we move ahead to town council uh related to our our obligations to to move ahead with this project with the city.
Are there, uh, is there a process with the uh community? You know, the A C C or specifically, I guess, is my question.
We have reached out to the A C C. We've been in communication with the A C C through this entire, through through our entire um application preparation. So um we we do have communication lines open with the A C C. Um, we'll continue to have communication lines open with the A C C as we move forward. Uh, you know, just, just so you know, there's actually not a homeowners association in Oasis Creek. So a lot of our discussion is oriented more towards the A C C because there's not another entity that um represents the homeowners. And again, if I'm getting, and I if I'm representing things incorrectly, please correct me. But but uh, but that's kind of our 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 line of communication has been with Jeff Peterson at the A C C. And he he has communicated out to other folks within the uh within the uh the property owners. So there actually is not a H O A or a property owners association, but he has reached out uh to other property owners. We've reached out to Jeff and we've had other comments come into from from other property owners. So um the lines of communication are open. We'd like to see them stay open. Um, but but right now that's that that's kind of where we started. We started early with that process. And while we're continuing with it.
Can you speak to, you know, the, what are the comments? I think it was from either Jeff or the A C C was regarding uh combining driveways. Uh, can you speak to that thought?
Well, we have combined driveways in that, you know, each each tract will have a a shared driveway for two, two units for a duplex. You know, I think part of our observation about um Oasis Creek uh kind of the neighborhood right now is that there are some parcels of land that share four units on a driveway. It's created a parking situation along North Trevor Trail. That's not desirable. With that many units on one common driveway, um my goal would be not to repeat that. Um, i- if it, not to repeat the problem, you know, if if this is truly an opportunity, it's it's one thing. But just from observation of how things are are working on on North Trafford Trail, there are a lot of people who are parking on the road because they can't park um, you know, uh appropriately within the the spaces that they have. Um, so that's my observation as a planner. I I would choose ma- maybe not to repeat that. Um, I would like to share driveways um uh with two units sharing a driveway, which would leave us room uh for adequate access and parking. Um, so that's, that's kind of been our goal rather than to add additional density that might create parking situations for the neighborhood.
And and what is the uh number of parking spaces per unit? Or say two per duplex um that you're anticipating?
You know, we would have at least two spaces indoors and we could have two spaces outdoors there. So that's, that that would be um a minimum for each of those units. There's not, we're not changing anything in the code in that, you know, we would have to meet the requirements of the code for parking. So we're, we're not asking for any kind of variation, but certainly what I've illustrated just graphically, uh, you know, in in kind of the diagrams that we've done illustrates that.
You know, I've seen pictures of
Sorry, I think I lost George. I'm not sure if uh.
George is lost. Um, he froze up, so we're gonna have to pick it back up with him a little later if he logs back in. And we're moving on to Commissioner Zippertly, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, I have a question about whether or not on-street parking is allowed in the Oasis Creek area per the covenants.
It's not. According to all the covenants, if, no.
So so clearly there is a problem with lots of people parking on the streets because of the um tightness of the driveways. That answers um my one question. Thank you, Commissioner Schacter. My other um question in looking at the site plan and the open space that is designated, I'm aware um on most of these illustrations to the northeast, the upper right corner, there's a park over there. And on the aerial photographs, you can see that a path comes down, touches the northern, northwestern edge of the open space, and then it heads northeast over to the park. Um, but I'm seeing that the open space on the proposal here does not continue to provide access to the park. And you'd basically have to walk south and then through the hairpin turn and around these duplexes to have access to the park that I realize people probably have been trespassing to get there, but I'm wondering how come there's not a pedestrian connection from the residences to the north over to their park?
Well, there is a pedestrian connection and that would be the trail as you observe. That's that's along the road. So the the path that runs along the road would be available to folks who are who are accessing the park or or otherwise just traveling north to south along the edge of this property. So that that is something that that will commit to, commit to upgrading and maintaining. So so that will still, that will still be there for access. It does ultimately get down to the south um uh to to that trail. Um, so it does go out around the outside edge. You are correct, but there is, there is a off-off-road access to the trail and to the park along the edge of this property.
Is there a reason why um when laying out the initial A seven open space, that it was not um connected to the park? Is that twenty sixteen is when these lot lines were drawn?
The lot lines were drawn in twenty sixteen. I think, you know, one of the main reasons that open space is on the south side. Uh, you know, those that um S curve that runs around the south side, you know, visibility is not great on the inside of that S curve and to have development along there. You know, is is a, it 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 really, I mean, if we're gonna try and leave something open with less traffic and less driveways, that was really a the, you know, one of the locations to do it. It's also, it doesn't quite show, I think, on my site plan, but there is a a a bit of open space across the road on the on the little neighborhood that's on the point. So it is contiguous to that, although there's not a park element in that. So I, so so while it does have a bit of contiguous open space quality to it, uh, really leaving that bottom piece open was was just to reduce traffic along those S curves and and try and provide it in an appropriate location. And 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 one last thing is there is a trail that runs through there. So the the trail that's currently there is is running through the open space and and will continue to run through the open space.
That that does make a lot of sense to keep the two um open space parcels contiguous um like that. Some, who's, whose responsibility is it to enforce parking rules in Oasis Creek?
That, that is not, you know, um, I, you know, again, it's a covenant issue. Um, I believe, I I believe it's a covenant issue. I'm not sure if the city of Glenwood Springs, I, you know, is obligated to do that. Somebody from the city may have to answer that for me.
Carolyn, uh, I I would just add that, you know, it it, that parking is occurring in the public right-of-way, the city's right-of-way. Um, however, it's not signed, no parking. Um, I'm sure if the neighborhood were to request that the city, you know, enforce that and then we may get involved. But we haven't been requested to do so.
All right. Thanks you both.
You're welcome.
You, uh, George, you're back. I'd like to finish your questions.
Yeah, I think some of it might have been answered uh from Carolyn. I I picked up partway through with her. I just had one other curiosity. There's um, it looks like a small lot along Trevor Trail to the north of tract A or one, I guess it would be tract one. Is that a buildable lot up there? It showed up on the uh the yellow, yellow outlines of the uh Google Earth image.
Mister Chairman, um, I believe that that's a City of Glenwood Springs parcel.
Okay. Thanks. It was just a curiosity on my part.
The G I S map and it did come up as City of Glenwood Springs um on on G I S.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? No, I got a, I got a quick one, but I may have to read you part of this. Um, this comes out of the uh A C C uh public comment and it says the developers appears to be attempting to modify the conditions of the covenants two thousand and sixteen variants through city approval. This is not the proper path forward and could potentially override portions of the protective covenants that the homeowners have relied upon for forty years. The A C C's sole purpose is to pre- to represent the interests of the homeowners and follow the restrictions defined within the protective covenant. We foresee several issues if this admittance is approved by the P and Z uh without considering homeowners' concern and the required covenant variance. The A C C and the Oasis Creek homeowners want to work in conjunction with the developer to form these parcels into a development that enhance the neighborhood. Planning and zoning's approval of this application should be delayed until the required covenant amendment is in place and the homeowners' concern have been addressed. Uh, this is submitted by Jeff Peterson, Jim Griffin and Greg Greer. Is this something we should be concerned with or or are we putting the horse in front of the cart? Or how does that work to cart in front of the horse?
Uh, well, Mister Chairman, this is again Scott Grosscup. You know, from our, the applicant's standpoint, we continue to be working with the homeowners to try and resolve this question that they have our issue about the covenants and the application of them. So uh, you know, we continue to work with them. Uh, we feel consistent with city staff that this is a a private issue between the parties. Um, there's certainly remedies within whatever covenant restriction that um, you know, if there's a, the breach of a covenant, there's certainly remedies that they have uh within the covenants. But this is a our private, you know, it's a private matter between the landowner and the uh the association.
So so even though this seems to be, you know, coming up more than once with within the comments here with the the public comments, and and they say it should should be addressed first. Um, Trent, oh, I mean, is there, is there some truth to it that that we could be? Or or we could, I don't know how to say this, but we could be making a mistake by moving forward with this? I know you didn't want to get into the H O A and all that stuff and covenants and I get that. I don't either. But is the heart in front, the the cart in front of the horse or or?
I, I mean, I I think you could easily say that if you went the other direction as well. I mean, you could say there's no point with amending the neighborhood covenants if you don't have the city approval first. Um, I I think that we were submitted an application. We processed that. The previous time it was a different order, but it wasn't mandated by the city that they that they changed those covenants in advance of coming to us for a subdivision and then we have certainly not tried to circumvent the A C C with the conditions that we have recommended.
Okay, I think that's what I needed to hear. So thank you, Trent. Thank you, Scott. Um, for your answers, anybody else? Commissioner Schacter?
Yeah, it's related uh, Chairman Dem, to what you just said and some other concerns. And I'd asked the same thing of Trent when we're talking to staff, but I would ask Scott. There's no action to be taken tonight, uh, but one of the suggested conditions, eleven A says approval of this plat by the city does not alter private covenants or restrictions that otherwise apply to the property. And I heard you mentioned private covenants and remedies. And I, as a commissioner, I won't speak for the whole commission, I would hate to see remedies occurring after the fact. So I'm just wondering and and I've heard from our staff that, well, we don't even know all the private agreements and covenants. So if this were a condition, what would be your interpretation, Scott, of how this approval occurs? If nobody's quite sure of all the private covenants or restrictions and remedies after the fact just generally involve lawsuits. So how how would this be handled?
I think it's handled just as any other covenant enforcement action is handled by um either an architectural control committee as they have authority on approvals of construction, uh, design or from uh, you know, and and any other sort of uh remedies that HOAs typically have with respect to properties that are within that covenant-controlled system, whether it's levying a fine, whether it's um, you know, whatever it may be, seeking injunctive relief. Um, but those aren't things that typically the city gets involved in.
So if, let me, let me um see if I understand. If the city, you know, like Trent said, we have an application, it's been approved hypothetically. And um, the applicant begins development and without the city really knowing for sure whether those private agreements, uh, private covenants or restrictions have been altered or not, then the remedy you're talking about is the A C C would have to then step in legally and get an injunction or somehow red-tag the process or go to the courts after the city has approved this. Is that what I'm hearing?
And um, unfortunately, I think that that is the truth and the remedy. Um, but that's, you know, we don't really want to say. You know, but I think that that's the way that it is with the approval of any covenant-controlled community. That the city, to a certain degree, once it's approved, gives up um enforcement on things that are outside of the city's regulations and allows that enforcement to be handed over to the a- association of homeowners.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, thank you. I'm still a little confused about this, but I understand that we shouldn't be involved i- in in the amendment of the covenants and all. And that's fine. I don't want, I don't want to be. I just want to make sure that it gets done before we before we take any action. That's my bigger concern. I don't know if I shared this with anybody, but that was, that was what I, you know, just read. Um, anyway, is there any other questions? No, so we'll go over to the uh public comments at this point. And as the many of you, some of you know, we are not gonna As many of you, some of you know, we are not going to take a formal action on this item tonight. We're going to reinstitute the, I think it's about a 10 day. Waiting period, maybe a little a little less in this case or a week. And we're going to go through some. Public comment tonight, and if you aren't able to attend tonight. To voice your comment, you can also mail it to City Hall at 101 West 8th Street. Here in Glenwood, or you can email it to Gretchen Rice Hill, Gretchen Rice Hill, sorry, at COGS.us. And they will be read into the record next meeting, which I think when you read this quick here. Is on September 29th. So today's 27 days. You have seven days to get your comments in if you're not able to do that tonight. Moving over to the attendees, I have 37s. If you, 37 of you, if you'd like to speak to this item, please raise your hand. It'll give me the sequence that I can call upon you. Also, you have three minutes. There should be a counter on the screen and and please follow up closely and. Finish up when we're down to a few seconds. So I will start with semester one. Please state your name and address for the record, at least your name. You don't have to state your address.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mark Lee. I have been a resident of Oasis Creek for 29 years. My wife and I have lived up here. Two streets above the proposed development at 506 Castle Court. My first comment is regarding. The PUD. And any covenants. There are no. Enforceable covenants. We have been here 29 years and there are really are no covenants that have been enforced. For that entire period. Now, there is a certain person. Who claims to speak for the development and that is spurious. Jeff Peterson does not speak for this. Group. So the covenants are essentially non-existent. They have not been enforced for 29 years and for anyone to suddenly decide that they need to take over the ACC. And enforce some of these regulations is. Unrealistic. I think the development that has been proposed. Six buildings on 5.3 acres is totally within reason. I think that this community should be thanking the Steinbrechers for not putting up 40 units. Forty multi-family units over the past 20 years. So. I think the city has the question before them. The PUD. Is non-existent and so I think you. You have a question before you and I think this should be approved for six buildings. On this large plot of land. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much for your comments. And let's see, I gotta get through here. We got Greg Greer, please. State your name and state your name for the record. Greg, are you there?
Am I on?
Yes, I can hear you now.
Hello.
Hello, please state your name for the record.
Hello.
Hi. We I can hear you. Can you hear me? Now you're unmuted. Can you hear us?
Now can you hear me?
I can hear you.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to get on.
We can hear you. We can hear you. If you can hear me disconnected, maybe try again.
Okay, uh. Can you not hear me?
No, I can hear you.
Okay, I had to. I'm I'm sorry. I apologize.
Please state your name.
My name is Greg Greer. My name is on one of those letters. From the ACC. I would like to say, first of all, I would like to agree with Mr. Lee about one thing. I've I haven't lived here as long as he has, but. I know Jerry and Mary Steinbrecker and for 27 years we've been able to. Enjoy this open space. Thanks to them and I agree with him that we owe Jerry and Mary our thanks. And the fact that they want to develop this property is something that is totally legitimate and I recognize that. Now, having said that. I think. I I want the Planning and Zoning Commission to know that. Jeff Peterson and I had an hour long phone call with Tate Fairbanks on Monday. I think what we're trying to do is is. Instead of just plop this down and tell the neighborhood, this is this is what's here and like it or leave. We're trying to bring the neighborhood along and I I don't think any. One of us on the ACC is trying to stop this and we, I actually learned things Monday. About more details about the plan and I I think it could end up enhancing the neighborhood. The main point I want to make is we're working together. To try and. Keep talking. To allow people to have their voice heard and the only way to do that is through the ACC. Unless you want to go through details and go knock on every door like was done in 2016. We're just trying to facilitate that role and bring up these concerns. That's what was in the letter. Now, leaving the phone call Monday with Tate and hearing the comments tonight. I think the developers are accepting that. I think they're open to further communications. I want the Planning and Zoning Commission to know that those communications are ongoing. I also. There have been times when the covenants have been enforced. And I also want the commission to know this question came up and no one's answered it yet, but. I believe in 2017, there was some city enforcement. Of the no parking along Traver Trail. That's, so I thought I'd go ahead and answer that. My time's up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And Jason Wilson, please state your name.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm Jason Wilson. I'm a resident on North Traver Trail.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to share my support for this project. I think it's a good project for not only the neighborhood, but the community. And from. The site plans we've seen so far, I think that's. I think that looks great for that use of space and. The only thing I want to address is. Everyone to remember in the neighborhood that it's not either open space. Or duplexes. It's single family homes or duplexes, so there will be something on that lot. That will occupy it. So I think that's important to keep in mind and. I think another thing to address is the parking is. I don't really think that's on the land developer is that's a separate issue. For the neighborhood and those homeowners. So despite that, I think, you know, I have, they have my full support for this as being a resident of the neighborhood and. I think everything looks good, so I'd like to see the P and Z kind of move forward with approval of this and the ACC. Take that in regards. So, thanks.
Right, thank you very much. And I have one more hand and that would be Sue and Bob Lutke, please.
Hi, this is Bob Lutke and my wife Sue here. Hello, are you, you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, fine. We we were probably the fifth or sixth house up here. We live at 406 Yale Circle. We really enjoyed that open space and I guess it's time for the time to build on it right now. And we'd like to support Jerry and Mary in their endeavors here. Looks like a really well laid out plan. It's a very friendly, congenial neighborhood. In all the years I've lived up here, which is whatever 20 plus years. We've never really had any any issues with neighbors or anything like that, so. I suspect this will continue on among the old people in the neighborhood here. So I might even look at buying one of those units. They look pretty nice. Many of the group here, we belong to Hundreds Club. There's a definitely a lack of single. Lower, single story homes in the area. So I think it's a great project and we'd like to support them and I hope P and Z approves it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And we're moving on to Mike Fator. Please state your name. Mike, are you there? Looks like you're muted. I cannot hear you. It looks like you're still muted. No. Maybe we'll. Let's see, bring you back in a little while and we'll move on to Terry.
Uh, yes, this is Terry Kates. I've been here since. Conception of this neighborhood 40 years. And. My first concern is just the density. If it's done right, I have no problem with. Develop developing that. Area over there. They're in my direct view plane, so. I'm a little concerned about. Parking made mainly and vehicles. I I guess my first question would be. If the covenants haven't been enforced, which they really haven't been up here since. Conception, does that mean that they still do not exist? That's a major question. And then. I'm looking at the Pacific Performance Contract I signed on July 14, 1980. And. On page three. Under G. They state. He will provide off state parking for all vehicles upon a paved surface, which means each house or. Unit has to provide their off-street parking. And then in parentheses, it says city has prohibited. On-street parking. So basically back then, they're saying the city. Does not leave any room for on-street parking. So maybe I need to address the city to post signage over there because the parking over there is. Usually out of control, especially in the winter time. When they're trying to plow streets, they leave cars there, they get snowed in, they get. Parked there for the whole winter and it's a real safety issue. So I think that's my main concern that heights requirements and trees like cottonwoods should not be permitted. That grow up over 100 feet and ruin. Property owners' view planes that are currently here. With people that are only going to be there for a year or two and then move on. Other than that, I'd say let's proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. And back to Mike. Is Mike? Is Mike here?
Okay, I think I'm fine.
Okay, there you are.
Yeah, thank you very much. Just a couple of points of information here. You know, the Lees were trying to allow unlimited rental of homes in Oasis Creek without restrictions. And also ACC basically is is staffed by basically one person because Jim Griffin's gone six months out of the year. The other thing is, is that the applicants. This might be for Doug, but the applicant said that there was a hardship in polling the total community, whether the community would approve or don't approve. I don't understand that. Number one, can the community, that being the case, can the community go out and do their own polling and bring it back to P and Z?
Okay, that was a question to the applicant, if I got that right?
No, I said I picked a dog, quite honestly.
Okay, let's let's finish the public comments and then we'll see if the applicant wants to respond to any of this, so. If you've finished, that's great. We'll we'll pass it on.
I'm fine.
Okay, thank you very much. Let's see. And we got Jeff Peterson, please. Also, if you could state your name, that'd be great.
Great. My name's Jeff Peterson. Thanks for putting on the presentation tonight. I, as Mr. Lee stated, I do not represent the homeowners. I am part of the ACC, which. You know, has acted as a bridge for communication and tried to convey the concerns of the community to the applicant, but. I have no way represent the homeowners as a whole. With that said, you know, we want to continue to specifically work with the applicant to address specific concerns and. You know, I think we're we're getting there. I think it's a quality project done well. It can enhance the neighborhood. It's different from the single family homes that were suggested in 2016 and I certainly have. Some concerns that P and Z approval would override the covenants, making them irrelevant. And so I think I would encourage the P and Z to delay approval of the application until the process of gaining covenant amendment to move these. From single family homes as the amendment in 2016 represented back to multifamily homes is taken care of. And certainly hope to, you know, address some of the safety concerns and items that were brought up by by the homeownership in those discussions, but. Overall, I think it can be a quality project and it can enhance the neighborhood. But I think we need to, you know, put the brakes on just for a little bit and allow us to to work those. Issues and and discussions and then, you know, the P and Z, or I'm sorry, the ACC can can help facilitate conversations with the neighbors, but that amendment really needs to go to the homeowners for for approval, so. You know, overall, like I said, I'm supportive, just had a few concerns that that should be addressed before P and Z approval. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anybody else? That called in that would like to comment on this application? Please raise your hand at this point. No, I see none. Okay, great. I'll close the public portion for tonight. Again, if you. If you weren't able to comment tonight, send your comments to Gretchen Rice Hill at COGS.us. Or in written form to 101 West 8th Street, which is City Hall. And we'll read those comments in next meeting, which I think is the 29th, so you have a week. Back to the applicants. Anybody like to respond or rebuttal to any of the comments you heard? Please raise your hand. Or just start speaking. Either way, Doug, I think you're ready.
Yeah, yeah, I I unmuted, so, you know, yeah, I I do want to let you know that we will continue to work with the with the the property owners in Oasis Creek. You know, we have a, we've reached out to the neighborhood, we've received comments, we provided input back. So it is a process. You know, our goal here with the planning commission and ultimately city council. Is to demonstrate to you that we've met the standards in the code, the standards in your comprehensive plan. We comply with all of those standards and that we've put together a project that we feel like is going to enhance the neighborhood, so we're not just trying to meet minimum standards. So we're not just trying to meet minimum standards to move forward. We're trying to move forward with a quality project that will indeed work for the neighborhood. That's our goal. We feel like we've met the standards in the code. And we, we meet the, we meet the requirements and the underlying zoning. We'd like to continue to work with the neighbors in regard to the neighborhood concerns. But we'd also like to continue to work with the planning commission and ultimately city council, demonstrating that we've met the standards in your code in order to move forward.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? No? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Any questions, last questions to staff or applicants? And I see Commissioner Shacter.
Thank you.
I can't see you though.
Oh, I'll show up here one second. There you go. A question again of Scott, just in a, if you will, an opinion. I noticed, I think somewhere in the plethora of paperwork, that changes to covenants required 75% I believe of homeowner's approval. But I believe, I'd like your pressure, I believe that's different than, than zoning use. Would that be your interpretation?
My understanding is the zoning of the property is dictated by the city of Glenwood Springs and its plan and its code and the PUD that was originally approved, which PUD approved 50 multifamily units on this tract A. And that was then incorporated into the covenants.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaver, please.
Jeff make a reference to a covenants change or amendment. And Scott, maybe you just answered that, but it wasn't clear to me. Is there something that needs to be done legally in this process to rectify any other kind of approvals or whatever that has been done before?
It's kind of a big question, broad question. Are you saying with respect to the various existing covenants or what was done in 2016?
No, I'm, I'm just, I'm just speaking to what Jeff mentioned. He said something about a covenant being that was in place that needed to be changed or, or modified.
Yeah, the existing covenants from 1980 recognized this tract A as a multifamily, allowed multifamily development on this tract A.
Right, I, I understand that. And then it, it became single family. Now we're talking about duplexes.
But yeah, I don't, I don't know if the covenants were ever amended to remove that requirement that tracks, that this be called a tract. And that this, this particular parcel be allowed for multifamily use.
So the change should be to not require 50 units on this parcel, is it?
No. What I'm suggesting is that the, the parcel allows for multifamily development as the covenants currently sit.
So it, it never was changed from that to single family?
That's correct.
So is, is there a process that should happen now to clarify that?
The, my reading of the covenants and don't hate to get down into the weeds here is that they can only be changed by a majority vote of, super majority of the membership. And the membership never changed the covenants.
And should that be done now prior to
No, that's
we're doing.
That is no longer required because the covenants recognize this as a, this parcel as a tract and as a multifamily tract. And so what is happening is the plat is being modified or reverted back to allow for the multifamily designation that was allowed in the covenants.
I think I'm understanding Trent's stance now. I just
Okay, I, I can I, can I just add to that real quick? So the zoning of this property will not change. The, the PUD allows for up to 50 multifamily units. However, you are adding an additional kind of layer of regulation to this via the subdivision. So the subdivision would also apply in any conditions attached there too, which would include also a plat note that says that these are intended for duplexes. And then that open space tract is intended for open space. And I think that, that is the question, George, that, that's the question that the neighborhood is struggling with is, you know, what is a tract versus a lot? How many does it allow? I think what Scott is saying is that, you know, there was a variance that was granted back in 2016 by the ACC. I think I just heard his interpretation to be that that actually required a majority of the neighborhood to make that decision anyway.
But it didn't, it didn't happen.
Again, I, I, I think a lot of these conversations are still yet to be decided upon between the applicant and the neighborhood. And nothing that the city is doing is trying to, you know, change that.
Influence that. Okay.
And another comment, if I may, sorry. To Summers, to Summers question, you know, I mean, previously, the I'm sorry, now I've forgotten where I think where I was going with that. Oh, you know, there's a question about, okay, well, the cart before the horse. You know, again, I, maybe you could make that argument. But let's say that there is a, a legal issue here that goes on and on and on between the applicant and the neighborhood. The state, the city in regards to this subdivision has reviewed it according to our regulations and those specific subdivision standards. So that's not going anywhere regardless of, of the legal battles that may ensue between the neighborhood and, and, and the applicant.
So we, we don't, we're not a part of that. We've set to the side of that whole conflict, potential conflict.
And I'd like for, for it to remain that way, hopefully.
And if I may, Trent, when you use the term subdivision, you're referring specifically to the whole Oasis Creek area, the whole Oasis Creek subdivision or PUD?
Well, in, in this, in this circumstance, I'm referring to this proposed subdivision. So, you know, I mean, I, you know, again, the applicant is presenting to you tonight and on the record that this is intended for duplex lots. You're approving that subdivision based on what the applicant is telling you. If they were to try to change that in the future and say, well, guess what? New owner comes in, they want to put the, the other 38 units on one single lot. We're going to say, no, sorry, there's a clear plat note there as well as a condition associated with this approval, if applicable, that prohibits that.
And I'm taking it a bit out of context, but I'm trying to understand the definitions. Somewhere in all this paperwork, it refers to no subdivision of a tract. That's why I asked you what you're talking about with subdivision. Where does that apply? It's out of context tonight, but
Well, and I, and I think again, that's, that's another issue. The development code for our city does not define tract versus lot. I think that's a conversation that, that the neighborhood needs to come to, you know, with this. I don't care if you call it a tract or a lot. I'm still going to look at this subdivision as being approved at the area and size and limits on net density that we're considering.
Thank you. Sorry, George, I poached a little.
Mr. Chairman, if I
No, that's fine. I'm, I'm fine here.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Oh, please, go ahead.
This application, as I understand it, is not requesting further subdivision of the lots. That subdivision occurred in 2016 with without, I guess, object, I wasn't there, so I would, I don't know, but without objection from the HOA or the Architectural Control Committee.
Okay, everybody clear? No? All I get is smirks and smiles. Okay, we'll see what we can do here. Anyway, I think if there's no more questions at this point, we're going to go into a motion. And at this point, I'm entertaining motion to continue.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Do we have to elaborate it? I thought this is a normal part of our procedure anyway, as set up by our agenda.
Well, we have, we haven't done it in a while. I don't know if you noticed, but the last few, we just kind of moved through. So it'd be nice if you could mention the next meeting that it's moved to, do you know?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we continue the hearing on planning item 1520 to our next scheduled P and Z meeting for that purpose on the 29th of this month. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion to continue.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion on this item? Probably not. We heard a lot and maybe here's some more comments next, next time. So anyway, there's no discussion. I will call for the question to continue.
Commissioner Shacter?
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver?
Yeah.
Commissioner West?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sibley?
Yes.
Commissioner Dame?
Yes. And the motion carries. Thank you, Jen. We got this one. We'll see you guys on the 29th.
Thank you. See you then.
Thank you very much.
Good night.
Have a good night. Moving on. Actually, you know what? Let's see, what is it? 8:41? How about five, five minutes of recess and I'll see you in 46.
Great.
Recession. Okay, we, we all back? Summer and Ben?
Here, I just, my camera went out. I don't know how to get it back.
Okay. Summer, you back? There you
There you are.
That's Ben. Okay, give it a couple of seconds here. There you are. Okay. Calling to order the second half of the City Glenwood Springs Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. Currently about ten to nine and we are moving into new planning item B for tonight and that is planning file forty four twenty, consideration of requests for a special use permit for a retail marijuana establishment in the M one mixed use corridor district. Ben, please.
Hey, good evening again, everyone. Trent Hyatt with Community Development. I think I've figured out how to make it not so small for you this time around. But Alyssa, will you please promote a few folks that are in the attendees list and some potentially some others if I don't get everyone, but Peter, Vicky Rivas, and Brandon.
Hello?
Is everyone seeing it larger now?
Um.
Yes.
Okay, this is a special use permit for Martin's medicinal on a twenty three Melray Road. This subject property is located in the M one mixed use corridor district existing at the site, which is point four six five acres and includes two parcels. Is an approximately a thousand square foot liquor store as well as a thousand square foot vacant former convenience store where the special use permit is proposed or the special use rather and fuel sales. Currently, the applicant requests a retail marijuana establishment in that thousand square foot retail space that is vacant. Section seventy twenty thirty E table thirty point one identifies retail marijuana establishment as a special use in the M one's own district. If you see here at the bottom of the page, it's going to be the east elevation of the building and property. I will point out that the applicant does not intend to include or to retain the fuel cells at this site. The pumps will be removed, however, the camp canopy is to remain. So if you remember with the previous proposal that has since expired, you know, they, they intended to keep the fuel sale business that was occurring there. Section seventy thirty thirty E eleven outlines the retail marijuana establishment review criteria. B being the licenses required by the code. That would be similar to a liquor license that is processed through the, so the city clerk's office. C, no retail marijuana establishment shall be located within either five hundred feet of an existing public or private school facility or nine hundred feet of another retail marijuana establishment. It is pretty close to Glenwood Middle School at five hundred and thirty nine feet. If you remember, we had that established, that distance established by surveyor with the previous application. So we're, we're pretty certain on the distance there. And also, there is a Montessori school that operates on a property that is referred to as a demos property, but off of, or closer to the, to our charter school. So that's fairly close at six hundred and sixty feet, but still outside of the requirement. The closest marijuana related establishment is Osiris off of Dever Road, which is approximately fourteen hundred feet to the southeast of this property. Three shall be allowed in the specific zone, again, M one. D, the hours of operation shall comply with the times, limiting them to eight AM to seven PM Monday through Sunday. And assigned permit shall be obtained from the community development department. That will be required by the applicant prior to any new signage at the site. Storage of retail marijuana shall not exceed twenty five percent. Four, there shall be no discernible odor related to the use. Again, you know, this is always kind of the issue that we, we discuss with these applications. However, the retail establishments are not the ones that we've necessarily had any issues with in the city. It's the cultivation facilities. That being said, we still do recommend a condition for nuisance violations. Any that may occur at the site, but specifically odor is one that we want to make sure we address. I, and this is the special use permit general requirements and I being compatibility with the surrounding area. Again, there's a mix of use and uses in the area that include fuel cells on, on the opposite side of Melray Road. Restaurants, auto body as well as repair, auto repair services. And you know, these uses are pretty similar to those that we find along the highways, both eighty two as well as Interstate seventy that serve the traveling public. Adequately minimizing impacts. Again, there's a potential odor issue we discussed. Three, consistency with the general purpose and intent of the code for which it is. Comply with applicable standards of the, of the code. It is in compliance. Staff does recommend a delineation of parking access in, in, in pedestrian access area along Melray Road where there is not currently a sidewalk. You'll see that in the conditions. Conformance with the comprehensive plan. This area is identified as mixed use and being that this is infill development, it does support a lot of check it out. Siri thinks I'm talking to her for some reason. And six, minimizes adverse impacts to health, safety and welfare. We have not found that it does negatively impact the health, safety and welfare of the inhabitants of the city. Reviewing agencies, engineering did have some comments related to fuel pumps and underground storage that would need to be addressed at the state level. If they do remove those, you know, we, we're not sure about a C dot access permit for this site. Some of the older existing developments along Highway six and twenty four didn't necessarily ever have an access permit. So it's kind of checking a box and make sure that it's, it's a knowledge at the state level. As well as they did recommend some general building and site development requirements. We have not received any comments from adjacent property owners. Section seventy sixty thirty G one D allows you for this use to recommend the city council approval, approve with conditions or denial. You may also continue the application. Staff does recommend approval of action item one with the findings and conditions on page nine of your staff report. The applicants are here and may also wish to, to provide some, some details about the application. You know, one thing I will point out is that there is an existing Martin's medicinal facility that is located in North Glenwood. I don't, the applicants with the sale of that property are no longer going to be allowed to, to occupy one of the, the suites there. And so they're trying to relocate to this location. They have indicated numerous times that, you know, really they, their, their plan is to try to obtain and secure the special use permit, but more importantly, they plan to fully redevelop this site in the parcel to the west at some point in the future to include the existing uses that are there as well as, you know, other potential office or retail space. I guess that would depend on the market. But I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
All right. Thank you, Trent. Back to the commission. Questions to staff at this point? Commissioner Sacter? You're muted.
With the intent not to have the fuel there, what becomes the status? What, what technically is the canopy in terms of the site and how might that or not? And what is the intent for that large pole sign, you know, at this point?
I think that the applicant would like to retain the pole sign. You know, I, I, I think it's a really good question somewhere because, you know, I'm not certain if that non-conforming sign has been used in the last six months. So it may have lost its legal non-conforming status. If you remember, you were on the commission for the previous application and you know, one of the specific concerns you had was the existing legal non-conforming sign. And that was a condition of the former special use permit to be, for it to be removed. To the canopy without the, I mean, I, I don't know that it, I mean, it would just be considered an accessory structure. You know, I mean, it, it was related to fuel cells previous, previously, but it would just be a, an accessory structure. I think it meets required setbacks in the city. And you know, and I'm not sure, covered parking is nice, but you know, I, I'm more concerned about the parking underneath that structure. You know, there's approximately four spaces easy that, that are accommodated there and then the, the others that are in front of the building. If you remember the last application, there was also consideration of the parcel to the west to include some employee parking there. We didn't have specific parking standards for marijuana related uses in the city at that time. And there was some concern that with the liquor store, the proposed retail marijuana establishment as well as the fuel cells that, you know, we may have an issue with, with employee parking and that's why that was added there. I think the applicant was fine with adding the parking there. However, I, I may have convinced them that that is, is well, one, not necessary because they have ample parking and two, if they improve that parking lot, our code would now require them to bring the whole entirety of the access and circulation at the site into compliance with the code. And again, we would obviously would, would require that in the future with the redevelopment of the site, but I don't think they have any interest in doing that at this point.
And non-conforming back to the pole sign. According to code, what is it if it's not being used for a period of six months, then it, then it has no vested right to be there or is that, or something like that?
Yeah, it would lose its, its grandfathering. It would lose its legal non-conforming status.
And do we know the status of that sign officially?
I don't know. I'd be willing to bet it's not been used in six months, but I would, you know, have to verify that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Shaver, please.
That's all I have.
So the tanks that are there now are, there's no requirement for them to be removed at this time? That's a good question, George. I'm, I'm, I'm not sure of the state requirements related to those takes. You know, I, there may be a requirement that they be removed within a certain time of not being utilized, but I could not say for certain.
And let's see, is, it looks like the access is from Melray. Is that correct? And then out to six and twenty four? Is that the way the circulation has to happen?
I don't know. I don't think there's any requirements for in and out, you know, along Melray, it's pretty wide open. I, I, I'm sure that both the city as well as C dot would like to further restrict access at the site and that will happen in the future with future redevelopment. What I was most concerned about is that, you know, getting some type of delineation for pedestrians there in, in the meantime. And, and you know, I don't know that that has to be a sidewalk, but I would say something that's acceptable to our public works director and city engineer. I think the applicant's on board with that.
Like a, a marked crosswalk or that sort of thing, you mean?
Yeah, exactly. I mean, if it was just, you know, striped or something to alert the traveling vehicles in that area that, you know, hey, just pay attention here, you know?
Yeah. Well, on the, the plat here, it looks like there's an existing curb that directs you out of this property onto six and twenty four, which would mean the only way in there would be Melray. Isn't that correct?
Oh, you, you made, yeah, egress, ingress and ingress, I don't think is restricted on, on highway or I'm sorry on Melray Road. It may be on highway six. I can pull up a
Well, I, I guess you could go back out on Melray, but
Yes.
Only in on Melray as well. It appears unless I'm missing something here.
Yeah, I would agree with you, George there. It's, it would egress only along highway six and twenty four headed westbound and down.
And then where they have gas equipment to be moved, that's, is that the part of the parcel that could potentially be developed further?
Correct. You know, the, the pump is actually on the eastern parcel, but the, the, the storage is on the western parcel to the north end.
Right. Okay. All right. So then the liquor store and the marijuana would share spots one through six, is it, as well as the others along the, the west side there?
Yeah, well, along the, the south side. Again, I, I don't think there, I don't think that they will create any parking on the western parcel because that would require them to bring the entire circulation at the site into conformance, which is pretty much, you know, impossible with the current location of the, of the building there. But you know, along the front of the building and underneath the, the current gas canopy, they would have a minimum, at least ten spaces and the two uses combined would require eight.
So if you're getting that many underneath the canopy, aren't you losing egress onto six and twenty four?
Not really, because you still, you still would have some access around it outside of the, the coverage of the canopy.
So, so what does this mean? Zero, oh, six through thirteen, what? Parking area gravel. Is that a, is that an old design?
Yeah, that's, that's what I was referring to. You know, the, the applicant, they, they proposed a lot of similar improvements to the, the native roots, gas and grass application that came through, but upon thorough review of the application, I said, well, with today's regulations, if you make those improvements on the western parcel for parking, then it's going to require you to, to bring the entire circulation on both parcels into compliance with the code. They don't have any intentions of doing that, nor would it be possible with the building location. And unrestricted access, way folks get into the lot currently, it's pretty, pretty difficult.
Yeah, I guess I'm confused because it, so they're really not showing parse, parking and and circulation in this application.
Well, they're just utilizing the existing circulation at the site. They're not proposing to make any, any changes to access or circulation currently. And what exists?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Any other questions to staff? Just quick, Trent. Did they, did, did they submit some sort of a timeframe or timeline when they would like to make changes? So in the near future, is it?
They have not, they have not stated specifically. I mean, that was one question I had and imagine that Peter and or Vicky can provide you some more detail on that.
Okay. And do you know if, if their intentions are to buy this property?
Yes. My understanding is that they are currently under contract to purchase this. I believe Peter and Vicky are, are friends of the operators of Martin, Martin's medicinals.
Okay. Okay, that confused me. So they are not Martin medicinals?
So.
Hang on, not yet.
Yeah, and I, I apologize. I think Vicky actually is, so.
I'll just ask them. We'll, we'll get it. It's all just details, no problem. Anyway, cool. Thank you, Trent. Applicants, would you care to comment on your application? Please state your name and raise your hand and we'll get going. Who's first?
So I believe Peter wants to go first because he is the purchaser of the property. I am the owner of Martin medicinals, so we're looking for the special use permit and if And if there's any questions or any kind of comments on the property itself, that would be from Peter Fornell. Is he muted or can you tell?
Oh, he's here. I think he's ready to go.
Okay.
I I am, if you'd like, I don't have too much to say. Can you hear me?
We can, please state your name for the record.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, Peter Fornell, sorry about that. And, you know, not a lot to say, but it will be my intentions to to make improvements as we go here. I think we just wanted to get, you know, everything in the proper steps. We wanted to get the special use permit in place and then start to make our plans for the property. I I've, I'm I'm familiar with the local energy use code. I'm I'm familiar with local development. I've been doing it for years. And I'll be careful to operate within the confines of your code and make all my applications. I just want to make sure that we have. Permission for the use that we'll be working towards.
Okay, great, thank you. Anything else from the applicants?
I don't believe so.
Okay, excellent.
Marco, and and I will add, and and I've been very clear with the applicant that. Any substantial changes to the property would require an amendment to the special use permit and and they understand that, so. In in some circumstances, if the building was less than ten thousand square feet, you would not, you know, see the design of it. But because it's associated with this special use permit, you'll actually have an additional layer of review here if they make substantial changes.
Thank you, Trent. So I, I assume you guys just want to get moving and move in and start operating. Okay, got it. Excellent. Any questions from the commission to the applicant? Nothing? Not at this point. Okay, fair enough. Thank you. We'll open the public portion of this hearing. And again, we will not be making a formal decision on this tonight. We will continue this item until September twenty nine. If you are not able to comment tonight on this application, you have a chance to either do it by snail mail to one on one. West Eight Street from Glenwood, or you can send an email to Gretchen Rice Hill at COGS.us. You have seven days till our next meeting and we will read your comments into the record. On the next meeting. Now, anybody from the public here would like to speak on this, please raise your raise your hand. Three, I see three people. But nobody wants to speak to this in the attendees list. No, alright, we'll close the public portion and we will get back to the commission. Any additional questions or? About late questions to staff or applicants, commission at this point? No, see none, then I am entertaining a motion to continue. And planning item forty four dash twenty, especially as permit retail marijuana establishment. So I'm going to unmute it.
Regarding planning item forty four dash twenty, I would move that. We continue this hearing until the next scheduled P and Z meeting on October twenty ninth.
A second.
Motion and second, any discussion on this item? This point, no, I see none. Okay, and now call for the question to continue.
Governor, you said October twenty ninth, I'm assuming that you meant September twenty ninth.
Yes, I did. Thank you, I stand corrected.
I'm sure glad you caught that.
My wife's birthday, I'm glad she did.
I'm just trying to get twenty twenty over with as fast as I can.
I can amend my second.
Okay, so September twenty ninth it is, excellent.
Okay, Commissioner West.
You're muted, there you go.
Yes.
Commissioner Zippoli.
Yes.
Commissioner Dame.
Yes.
Commissioner Schacter.
Yes.
Commissioner Shaver.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent, thank you, Jen. Okay, we'll see you in a week.
Thank you, have a good evening.
I guess that concludes, let's see, this does conclude for tonight. And. Commissioner comments. Let's go first, I'm just going to call on you, Commissioner Zippoli.
Well, it's nice to see an application for something in an appropriate place. I, I guess I I am, this is one of the first times I've ever had to deal with. An HOA or lack thereof in terms of a planning thing, but I suppose we have to, am I supposed to wait till after we decide anything to discuss this? Okay. And I got in the paper again from last time. But I guess that's all right, even though they did misquote me, and that is all, thank you.
All right, thank you. Down the line here, Commissioner Shaver.
Well, I would. I would like to see. Maybe something in writing like we had. Previously from from the attorney's staff about this. Situation up in in Oasis Creek. It just, I was more confused the more answers I got and it just didn't seem like anybody wanted to. Be straightforward about it, so, you know, I would like, hopefully, we could get something that. Gave us some assurances to, for the city and also for us as a commission. In terms of. What our actions mean and what it might mean for us. Like I say, either as a city and or a commission. Other than that, I don't think I have anything to say or offer.
Alright, thank you. Commissioner West.
I agree with Commissioner Zippoli. I think that that Oasis Creek project, it sounds like it's in a good spot and. Sorry if I'm putting words in your mouth, but I think it sounds like a nice project to help infill in an area that. Is currently zoned for it. Fill the need for more housing and. Sounds like a product that we could definitely use. In Glenwood, so, but they do it well, it all happens, but we'll see. That's it.
Alright, thanks, and Commissioner Schacter.
Well, nothing. I hope you all have a good week.
Good enough, thank you. I just have a quick question. We've been doing workshops here and there and some of you may have noticed my descent with certain things. How, what what do I have to do to bring things in front of you to talk about? How does, how does that work? Do I, do I just show up one day and say, hey, I like an extra item on the agenda? Or I tell Jen ahead of time, I want to chat about this, or?
Are you talking about like a code amendment?
A code amendment, or or just a a vision thing, or maybe something that could be in the future, maybe a future code amendment? I don't know, just things that I feel should be discussed at our level.
So I think, you know, here is a good opportunity, so if you want to sort of have that conversation, I think that's. For example, the sidewalk, the lengthy sidewalk conversation that we had. It started at the planning commission direction for us to bring you something, so you, as a body, said. Hey, we keep hearing this, would you please bring us a code amendment? So the code amendments can be initiated by staff or by the planning commission or by city council. And so that's an example, and then if you, unfortunately, we we have a lot of items that are coming up. And so we will, we will try to get a spot on your dance card, but it is. We, we have quite a few items that we're processing, so it might not be that timely.
I'm a very patient man.
Okay.
Very, very, but I just, I have a few things that I I think need to be, don't need to be addressed, but maybe should be for a future. Just so we talked about it, let's put it that way. And if and if something comes, comes, something further comes out of that, then great. And and if if it dies with us, it dies with us, at least I feel like I tried. And I can also make a list and send it everybody, just don't reply all. And maybe we'll go from there, see how the commissioner even feels about this kind of stuff.
So if I may, if you could send that to to Gretchen or to myself and then we can forward that out. So even if you send the email to everyone, it's still potentially considered a meeting, so we'd just like to route that through staff.
Yep, I don't want to get in trouble, not after all these years, not doing it. So, and the other thing is, ex commissioner Dunn sends his regards. He's doing well in Marquette, he's on the planning and zoning commission up there. And everything's well up there, so. And with that, that's it, and.
How are their sidewalks? That's what I want to know.
Sidewalks and parking sidewalks and parking, do they have any parking islands in Marquette? I don't know. Jen, anything, anything for us?
I don't think that they have anything pressing, just that we do have a number of items that we're processing. Both on the private side, the applications that are coming and the continued. Location and extent, applications from the city side that we've been. Preparing you for, and I think, I think that's all I have.
Okay. Excellent, and I think that concludes, so this meeting is adjourned. Good night, everybody.
Night. Thanks, Marco.